Good evening, everyone. It's welcome to this Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, November the first at approximately 7:10 p.m. Ms. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Yes. Daisy Brown.
Here.
Rod Powell.
Here.
Rock McKeer.
Here.
Danielle McDaniel.
Here.
Ken Terry.
Here.
Mike Terry.
Here.
There is a forum.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise at this time, I'd ask Ms. Jeff Ivey to step forward and pray for us. First, back to jerks, and then Chief Sturbrandt, Lee, and some pledge examples.
Father, we thank you for this wonderful nation that we live in and this great city you blessed us with, or we thank you for each of those that are serving our city and each of these citizens that make it so great. Father, we pray that you guide this meeting, give them wisdom in every decision they make. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You made it see it? Brother Robbie, you know the rules you have to say as in the essence of the bill. By the way, is that not the shortest prayer on history? For a Baptist preacher, that was amazing. All right. Thank you, Chief. Primal events for the October 4th, 2021 regular council meeting. If the council would take a moment and review those, I would ask, get those approved?
I'll make the most of it for a minute.
Thank you. And seconds improvement.
Brown?
Yes.
McKeer?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Ken Terry?
Yes.
Miss Terry?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements. I don't recognize everybody, but I can acknowledge you because I don't do names very well. But thank you for coming. We have some folks representing the Senior Citizen Center tonight, and I'm going to ask councils approval, if you will, or consideration of moving them up. Lisa acts like she needs to go home early. I don't think the rest of the people here, Lisa's got to go to bed. So with your permission, when it comes time, we'll move that item up from number six up to number one. Or I guess we need to go to new business with that? Okay, let's go to, we'll just go up to three under new business. If everybody's okay with that? Okay, thank you. And again, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Hopefully, you've eaten all your candy and everybody's well. Dr. Johnson's here. Thank you, sir, for being here. Appreciate you. Doctors, representatives, soon to be senators. All right, moving on. Committee reports. I think most of these have been submitted. Email was not. Please let me know, or Danielle, we'll get back with you on any questions you might have for the girls' club. Lisa is here tonight from the Senior Citizen Center, so if you want to ask, pick on her you may. And Parks Commission, I think Mr. Goldstein is here. I always wonder, I thought I saw Mr. Bailey.
He is.
Did he get tired already and late? He's back there, okay. So did you want to report, Mr. Goldstein? Thank you, sir. I know you're not Baptist. That was fast. Moving on to the citizen forum. The folks are here tonight to speak, so we'll let anybody who wants to come up, all I ask is that you come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and any concerns you might have concerning the Senior Citizen Center. Anybody want to speak? Looks like you're appointed.
I told him to be nice. I was doing everything I can to help us out. I know we've been without air conditioning for the last two months. I'm hoping we get it put in Wednesday. They're saying it's coming Wednesday. I know it's been hard to get parts. We're just up in the air what's going to happen to us this year since our contract is running out with Farmers Bank at the end of December. We're just wondering what's going to, is this year?
Not this December, we got one more.
Oh, I thought it was every year.
No. We ended up with a two-year or three-year the last time, so we have one year.
Okay.
You don't have one year, we have one year.
Y'all have one year, yes. But, I mean, we've got to do something. Mayor, the building's falling down around us. The back door's just about fell off the hinges. The turn oaks have ate the wood all up. The roof is leaking. The bathroom, we put five lecs out in the women's bathroom because it leaks so bad. The ceilings has fell in. The back kitchen, we've got all of our lights out because they leak in our lights. They're not working. We can't get anywhere to fix them because nobody's electrician to come in. We can't afford to hire them to come in and do it. We need some help. I don't know what's going to be done. I know y'all been looking. Danielle said y'all been looking at some centers and stuff and trying to find some land. Me and Danielle kind of talked today. She said maybe if y'all can get the land, we're going to try to get Judge Hudson to build us a building. If y'all can get together and do it. I mean, Mansfield got a grant when they got their new center built. We're going to try to see if we can get us a grant.
Absolutely. Can we touch on that a little bit before you're here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, we've definitely been working on it behind the scenes a little bit. Council's where I brought it to their attention, I think, more than once for sure, due to a couple of reasons. One, the lease is running out in a year for December. Two, that building still belongs to Farmers Bank. As you probably know, we, the city, and I'm speaking on behalf of the council for a second, and they can certainly speak up, is that we are not excited about continuing to put money in a building that is not ours, although the lease is very reasonable. It's nothing, a dollar a year, I think. So, but there comes a time when you just don't want to put any more money in somebody else's facility, and it's time to do something about it. So, we have researched some grants. We are technically not eligible for those grants. Mansfield would be. It's because of the size and that sort of thing, the income. So, we were flat out the total note until we make a move to, if we had the property, then we could be eligible for something. It wouldn't be the type of grant Mansfield got, but there's something out there through Western Arkansas Plant and Development District. It's not a lot. We have talked to, and I say we, Hunter is here. He's our building inspector. Him and, I think Casey may have talked to somebody. I'm not sure if Sonny, but we're talking, reaching out to some of the local contractors to visit with them. I have a volunteer, a general contractor to take on that building of such a structure, a new one, volunteering his time. That's pretty amazing. We now talked to a plumber, the Hunter, who is volunteering basically his time other than his helper. He would want him to be paid. And we're kind of reached out to an electrician already, so we're kind of there on that also. We have, and I've mentioned it to a few contractors, although I am going to have a meeting in either here or maybe at your place, maybe more appropriate, so they can kind of see what you guys have and say, here's how I'm going to do it. I told the council, I'm going to look at them straight down and provide them pizza or something, say, I need your help. I need everybody to volunteer your time. We have a couple of guys up here that's going to play all the time. Is that, maybe I'm speaking out there a little bit. We're going to reach out to the community and see who's available to do what for it to get this thing done. We did tour Van Muuren's facility. It's amazing. If you haven't been up there, it's 11,000 square feet. We don't need that. It'd be nice, but it is a Taj Mahal.
We don't want to play that much.
Yeah.
It is wonderful. It's beautiful. The first day you come, it claims.
Yeah, absolutely. It's all a different world up there. They're a city of 24,000 and we're not. It has a Michael Lejeune touch to it all over, or beloved Michael Lejeune. I reached out to Travis Bartlett with MAHG. I'm getting ready to sign a contract with him for him to do the study, to visit with you and I and the folks that use this facility. Go to Mansfield, go wherever you want to go, because you've kind of been around and seen these, we spot these places. So Travis is going to do a presentation for us once he gets set down with all of us and get our act together and see what we can come up with. I'm really confident we can get something done. And if you're going to include Judge, which I was going to do that, but if you're already...
Well, he has his free talk.
Okay, that's perfect. So it's countywide, and you know, everybody comes from, you don't turn anybody away. So unless they're from Allen, we understand that. Is this on? Anyway, so we're on, we're working on it. I know it doesn't seem like it, and we need to get it done ASAP. We have looked at some property in town, but on item number six, as you know, we're going to bump that up. So I'll talk a little bit about that then instead of now, I guess.
Want to sit down?
Okay, so we're, I'll wear you up. So we're going to look at that. We've got a location in mind that's, we already own, and we may or may not have to buy any property, which would be $150,000, going toward a building. And we get back on Van Muuren real quick so you know what we're looking at. That building, although twice as big as what we think we're going to need, when it was built in 15, was $3.2 million. So if you built that building today, you're looking at $6 million. If you're building a building that we think we want, probably looking at $2 to $3 million because of the way things are today. So it's not going to be an easy task. It's not going to be quick, but it has to be done. You deserve it. I only wish my dad was still around to enjoy it when we get it done, but he'll be there in spirit. So not trying to hurry you up in anything, but we're really trying to work on it as quick as we can. And I think the council's supportive of this, to say the least. So if that answers the thought you had there, does that help?
It does help. We're just, you know, we're, we sit down here, we just wonder what's going to happen, you know?
Sure.
The elderly is as important as...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We're all going to be there someday. We're the lower dwellers. So we need to make, we need to make it right. I didn't know until you told me Wednesday they're supposed to be here with the air. Is that right?
That's what, that's what I've been told.
Okay, that's been a long time coming. We, council wholeheartedly approved that $9200 expenditure a couple of months ago, and it's taken this long to even get to where they're going to show up next week. So...
And I hate the child to spend that much.
It is what it is. I spoke to Stan Oak about it, and he hated it too, but he did, I did say this to him, and I asked him, and he gave me a verbal okay, yes. If for some reason something happened to that building within a reasonable amount of time, we take that thing with us.
I don't make it.
Now, what is reasonable? Two years from now, we'll probably not be able to go back into it because he's going to lease that building out, to my knowledge, or he's going to attempt to.
Well, they better do a lot of work.
I know. So it'll be, it'll be a shock for them when they go in there to try to release this thing out and, as you deal with it every day. So...
If y'all happen to know somebody that can come and fix our lights for us now?
We can, you know, we still have maintenance money. So, yeah, we can, that guy right there will make a call tomorrow. You talking about in the kitchen?
Yeah, the kitchen.
There's nothing like a good floor isn't like that it leaks water in the floor.
Yeah, I mean, it leaks water, and I'm afraid they're going to, I would hope that it's one of them burned out.
That's going to fire.
We changed the bulbs and they won't come back on.
Yeah. You probably got burnt valves and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. And there's some in the dining room that needs to be replaced.
We'll get, we'll get an electrician that we use here at the city over there ASAP and see what can be done, because I know we have still, I think, some obligations to. I'm looking at time to see if that's maybe, maybe sort of kind of.
We'll make it.
We'll make it happen.
Well, I mean, we have, usually they'll make this money a while.
We actually have, no, we don't anymore. Didn't we have on staff, but no, we don't. We retired. Is he back part-time?
No.
No. We had an electrician on staff. That was cool, but no longer. So we'll, we'll be looking at that. If not tomorrow, then that's back this week. So we'll move on and we'll get back to the six here in a second.
Okay.
Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. Financial report.
Make this quick. We're going to hit the highlights. City sales and use tax budgeted growth, as you know, is 10%. The cumulative growth for 2021 is 12.8%. It's jumped up 28%. City sales and use tax is 2.8% above budget right now. The month over same period of 2020, which is October over previous October, is, was up 20.2%. So October was a good collection period for us. You do know it's from previous months that come in, and it dispersed with in the month of October. So preceding a couple of months was pretty good for the, obviously for the city over last year, and last year was excellent. So 20.2%. If you were to look at it right now, because we're in the middle of budgets, Parks, Fire Street is about, at the end of the year, they will probably end up about $35,000 above budget. That's what we budgeted for, and they're going to end up with about two plus $35,000 above. Water sewer is going to end up with about 140. So it's basically equating to about a one month change in the position that we originally budgeted for. City, county sales tax budgeted growth is 5.6%, and the cumulative growth is 14.8. So we're 9.2% above in county sales tax, and our month over the same month, October 2020, is 21.6%. So both the city sales and use tax at above 20% and the county sales tax at above 20% was a very good period for collections for the city of Greenwood. Our AMP budgeted growth, I gave you a revised graph there. The only thing I didn't revise because I was printed out about 15 minutes before the meeting, was over on the average monthly sales. It's the actual handout that I put in front of you. The calculation, the Q-Half shows that the average monthly sales growth of prepared food was 59.03. It's actually 23.12, and that's because the division was not by 10 months, it was by nine, because I hadn't changed that. Normally, I did just to pull calendar here. But everything else is the, is correct. The math for October's growth over the same period was 8%. And you know, that is exactly what we budgeted for the AMP growth. However, the cumulative growth is at 11.4, so we're 3.4% above budget for the AMP. Our average, average monthly sales growth, oh, I've already pointed that out. Net decrease in cash for October, we had a decrease in cash. There was some additional spending on some capital projects, was a $7,675 net decrease in the cash. Year-to-date net increase, however, is 2.4 million. Our current fund balance, all funds in for the city, is 15.792 million. Our net income for the city, all departments for October, was $237,000. That is the net income for the city, all in, all departments. The net income for the city, all departments year-to-date is 2.9 million dollars. And I think that's about all of the questions we can address this show. Oh, budgets are, we're heavily involved in the B-word, budgets. And we are at the point now where the last major piece of the puzzle is going to be our health expense, our health insurance expense for the city. And we have been told both in, there's Danielle. Oh, there you are. Danielle has been told and has forwarded the information on that, that we should have the information and the numbers in by Wednesday. So they're pretty late in getting us that information. It's not for lack of trying. We call them regularly to get the information. So we were told it would be as high as a 5% increase or a 12.2% decrease, depending on whether we stay with our current carrier or agent or insurance company or we switch. So we're going to be looking at that information hopefully by the end of this week, and we'll be able to bring it to your attention in the budget study session. That is the last big piece for my side of the budget. I have streets planning and waters budget in. I have sewers budget is available, but not turned in yet. There's some finer pieces, finer pieces that they're putting together on it. The rest of the budgets, I still don't have, but if we wanted to start looking at budget study sessions, street planning would be two of the good ones you could probably go with. You do know water and sewer have to go through the commission first. And then the last piece would be, I had asked for possibly that we hold a special session, and how to be brought up, I shall, I believe, a little bit later, on the salary issues and what we're going to do with the min-max, the salary scales that we are using, and also as far as the tolls concerned. That will be a lengthy discussion, I'm sure, and it's probably one we don't want to tap onto immediately like this, where there's several lot of agenda items. So we could knock that out of the study session. It would definitely help in going back to the departments and setting their salary areas in the budget. So at some point, we need to be considering when we want to have that session.
Yeah, if you want to, gentlemen, want to discuss that now and try to get dates set? That'd be awesome. Or some dates. We talked a little bit about it today, this morning. It would be for two, two departments.
Well, if you want to do the study session for the budget, but remember, I could have more information on that if we hit the salary issue first.
Right, okay. So just on salary. So, yeah, we said that this morning, you did. Let's do a, consider a study session on the salary issue, or the, call it, call it salary. So what about the 16th of November, or is that a Tuesday night, or?
You're not in basketball yet.
Well, I would like, you must, you must love playing a little bit.
Does it do Tuesday?
What about Wednesday night and 17?
Yeah, Wednesday night and 17. I'm going to black. Thursday night.
Or the 18th.
Thursday, Thursday, 18.
I felt like that three.
You can't move the 18ers.
I can. What was on the what?
I said either was on the plane.
Yeah, let's look. So Tuesday, you want to try, the suit? You can't for sure. AC 10, Friday?
You're talking about Tuesday?
Tuesday, 15.
16.
16, I'm sorry. The fire? Nope.
I could, I could like it 10.
It's two on Tuesday?
Or Monday the 15.
Or Monday?
I didn't wish to mean that, but I mean, I could do it on Monday.
Yeah. I want to hear what all your...
I'm down with the Monday.
How many times Monday? Monday, one, two, three, Monday, four, five, maybe six?
Can, if we do it on Monday, can we do it at 7?
It's your call.
Well, I've got my scout meeting now. That's right for, we're going to do a backpacking trip, so there's some planning.
Monday, 7:15, 7:15.
George, look. And while we're doing it at 7, I'll be 30 minutes late.
So we want to call it for 7:30?
Well, I mean, y'all go ahead, get started, and then I can just come in.
We will eat, we'll eat deer chili for 30 minutes. I'm sure somebody's going to provide deer chili. I don't want to do this thing.
So it'll be study session, yes, on salaries?
Yes. And I want to add to the agenda, if you're okay with it, a discussion on commissions about 30 minutes. I'll just, I think we can do it before or after, whatever you want to do.
You want a commission study session in that study session as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that right? Good. Yes. Monday, 15. That's my son's birthday. Can't do it. I'm kidding. It is for my son's birthday. Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Tom, finance? Okay. Auditors have been very, as you say, that talk about the auditors. One left today. We sent him on, gave him some candies, and we'll see him later. They've been very cooperative with us and very forthcoming and very interactive. I think it's just a really good sign, a trigger, not that they've ever been bad, but this year it's just been good, interactive. So we appreciate that. One lady will be here for another couple of weeks, I think. We're moving Senior Citizen, discussion on location of Senior Citizen Center up, so we'll go there. So here's what I know. I've talked to a couple of different property, or a couple of different real estate agents in town. It's a property, one being the empty lot directly behind the Greenwood Police Department upon the hill, which is next to the Dollar Store. It is currently, was currently $150,000. I got them down somewhat. I won't say how much, because that's not, probably kosher to do that, but that's not a horrible price for that. It is, however, as you know, this and this and this. The last thing we want to do for anybody is to create nothing but steps and stairs. So I asked Travis Hawkins, not Travis Hawkins, Travis Bartlett, to take our one Van Muuren picture, because they designed it and plopped it on that property. 11,000 square foot building, which we don't need, actually fits on there with parking, with some basic dirtwork. So we don't want one that big, don't want any one that big. So you could put a half that size, or 75 foot, 7,500 square foot, which is what I'm talking to Travis about now. Obviously, will fit on there very nicely. Probably, I mean, again, we're not going to build one where there's stairs or steps. So there's that. It's not been sold. I got them down a little bit on the price. And then discussions went to other plot spaces over on Denver Street. I talked to a gentleman in California about that property. It didn't go very well, but it is, it is viable, if you will. It's kind of off the beaten path. It would be lovely as far as trees and everything. And it's okay, but not very cheap. Where is that in that? Off of, it's the old rock house on Denver Street that belongs to the gentleman that owns the store craft building. It butts up to, it's contiguous to the store craft property. The house needs to go, it's, and we could buy, but it's probably, you're probably looking at two-ish to get that property. I called in to try to get it donated, and it didn't go well, and we've not gone any farther than that so far.
Two, 200,000?
200, yeah.
Is that the house that Charlotte used to live in?
Yes, yes. That's exactly where it is. So there's that. And then, Pithany, Pithany, how do you say that? From our Parks Director, who, you know, when I was a Parks Director, I was real smart too, until we came there. So Parks Director came to me one day and said, she said, what about the property that Parks Commission just purchased? Contiguous, I love that word tonight. It's not egregious, but it's close. You're welcome. That is contiguous to Bell Park. We obtained 19 acres recently from the McConnell family. There are serious plans to build a, I think you're going to love this. There are serious plans to build a splash pad up there. If you're not familiar with that, it's a big concrete slab with water coming on it. So we're going to put you folks up there in your building. After lunch, you go out, get on the splash pad, and you go off the splash pad and play around the disc golf, and then you go home. I mean, what a day. So there is that land. We own it. Water sewer commission is graciously considering, working on the engineering to get water and sewer to that for the splash pad and what could be the Senior Citizen Center. It is a little off the beaten path, but it's not fighting traffic like you do down here. It's off of Main Street. If you're familiar with the little cemetery on Main Street, right across from where Tommy Tensher used to live, and it still does, there's a drive right there, and it used to be called, it used to be private drive called something Ridge Road or something. The city bought the property to the right of it, if you will, to the north of it, and the road. So we own the road and 19 more acres. It's been cleared out from the water, or the Parks Department put a machine up there and cleaned it all out. That's around the corner. You go up there, and you can drive up there. It's a city street now. It's not spade-y yet, but it's a city street. So there's one house up there, and it's on the left-hand side, and that's still the private property from the McConnells, and we own all the way to the cell tower, which is joined Bell Park. So I'm bringing that to the councils, not for approval necessarily, but just to say, here's what we're thinking about. I think it's great. The Parks Commission did not necessarily vote. Mr. Goldstein's here. They may or may not vote, I don't remember, but it was brought to their attention. There was some discussion, and the majority felt good about it. I don't know that they all do. You didn't vote necessarily. Okay. So it is there. There is going to be a splash pad. The water sewer will be there, and there is, we can even share the parking lot for the splash pad, which is two birds with one stone. So there's, there's what we're thinking. Yes, ma'am?
It's not, if you, if you do drive up there, it is, there is a little sliver of property you'll be able to see that has been cleared. You can see to the next property on the north side of the road. Then there is a curve. Well, in that little S curve is where our splash pad will be. But over, if you're, if you're in the curve, if you'll look over to your right, that, that's where I envision where the senior center would be with ample parking. So you could actually see the building from Main Street, and there will be actually a walking trail there as well that will connect up into Bell Park. So...
Is that Bob and Santa's old place?
No, ma'am. That's the next road up, May. That's the turn. You got to come back.
It's called Fox Run.
Yeah, Fox Run down.
It's not a paved road. It's a gravel road.
If you go to where you're talking about in term, and come back down the hill, the first road you're going to come to is Chastain Drive Way, which is City Street. But the next one is the road she's referring to. If you know where Tommy Tensher lives, it's almost directly across the street or did. It's only almost right across.
It used to be called something Ridge.
It used to be something Ridge, thank you. And it's now Fox Run.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And like she says, you go up and you just do a little curve and it'll be on your right. And like she says, you go up and you just do a little curve and it'll be on your right. So, that's what our unofficial plan is, uh, the placement for it. Uh, we will take input, obviously, and, and again, Travis, I told Travis, I haven't seen the map, I mean, that, there's nineteen acres there, he can put a seventy-five hundred square foot building, a hun, a lot of them up there, but that would be an ideal place, I think. Uh, and then, and then we'll go from there. And sharing the parking lot is just a great thing.
And we, and we didn't take down any trees, so, um, there's plenty of shade, and, and like I said, there'll be a nice walking path someday that'll lead up into Bell Park, so more room to walk and.
Literally, you nestled in the park, is what you.
Right.
Yes sir.
Have you considered the property at two oh six Bell Road? Gary?
Tell me.
I wonder what Gary's last name is, on the bulldog.
Yes, we have a little bit, right down here.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, a little bit, I've not talked to Gary in a while about it, he, that is for sale. Uh, there's nothing wrong with that property, it's kind of tucked back a little bit too, if you will. There's four acres, pond in the back, for you folks that want to fish. I'm familiar with it very, very well, because I have visited with him at one time about getting that, and we were thinking about putting a road all the way over to ninety-six, and I kind of ran into a little issue, uh, on the other end, over by ninety-six with some property on there, so. But yes, that, there's, that's also an option, and it is for sale. Yes. Gary, uh, what's his name?
Norman.
Norman.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and it's access right off now, that, that is, and that is in the county, believe it or not, but that would not be hard to fix.
That'd be heavy for me out of this little.
Oh, there you go. I wondered what the other line of deal was there, I thought maybe you were part owner of that property.
Have you went and looked at the Madison Center?
We went over there, but we did not, Danielle wouldn't let me out of the car. She said they were closed, and they were, but there was a, there was a car there, and I'm like, let me out, and she goes, no, you're not going. So, I've not been in, I had been in it years ago, your mom was there. So, I want to go back with you, and, and whoever wants to go, and take a look at that, and any other facility.
Anytime that you go, I've got to teach you.
Oh, well, there you go, let's go after the meeting.
Okay.
No, I want to, I want to look at what you and your staff and your, and your clientele, if you will, think is, is right, because there's no way that Kinzlo or these gentlemen ought to build a Senior Citizen Center. I mean, I know Mr. Powell, I mean, Mr. uh, McDaniel's almost ready to go there, but, and I don't mean that bad. But, uh, we, we need to know what makes sense for you. I mean, it'd be silly for me to go design a building then.
Right.
You know, and the good news is, if it is good, I think Mr. Powell already made me mumble it over there. Anytime I call an architect, it just went up five hundred fifty thousand dollars. But, you need those, you gotta have those peoples to make it legitimate and, and handicap accessible and all that. You know, the one in Van Uren, and I'm not, this, that's an amazing facility, but the light fixtures in that thing probably cost two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Oh yeah, you walked into your room with the last.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely tremendous. So.
Mulberry has a really nice.
Yes, yeah, we lost Sunny Bell for about an hour after one day.
Mulberry has a nice.
Talking about the community grants and funding stuff, I didn't know where the guy leaning on the wall back there, alright.
Oh, that guy, yeah.
Happy to help, you know that, anyway I can.
Well, we need help.
And Deanna said she'd help, try to get grants. I mean, she did give us a grant for new cars, we are getting new cars.
Who did?
Deanna.
Yeah.
We got grants for new cars.
We'll take all the help we can get, I, I don't, you know, I, I live in my own little dream world, but I don't think I'm going to give pizza away and get everything paid for.
I know, I understand.
But I think there's some out there, we already know, we've got, we've got a plumber, we've got a contractor who wants to be in charge of it, and that's not cheap. Uh, to watch this thing being built, and of course, Hunter would be all over it as our building inspector, so.
Hey ma'am, have we or could we consider a FEMA grant for a safe room?
Safe room is a big deal, yes.
Could be you.
Yeah, so, what they do though, now, I say though, that sounds negative, I hate negativity. What they do is look at the community, and how many do you have already, and how many do you have within the area, correct?
Yeah, well, I, I inquired on that, and basically was told in order to get one of those, uh, everything else we were denied on because of our in kind of, and lack of diversity, I was told. Uh, but as far as the FEMA grant goes, I was told that there would actually have to be an, a disaster near us or for us to qualify to get some of that funds. And obviously, we don't want a disaster to occur near us, so we can't get those things, but that's what I was told by, um, Wabidini.
Which is very interesting. The schools, every school that we have, we have a safe room now.
That's what I was told.
The one at Van Uren has one, uh, which doubles as game room and whatnot. Uh, but no, we can, I mean, we'll apply and just go from there, but I, I, I remember something that wasn't, didn't sound like we were going to get it.
Well, I think.
That may be something some state representative, Senator could help with, I don't know.
Deanna was going to be with you and the county judge, because they do have some money that they got from culture groups,
Yeah, yes.
and they don't want to spend it on, so we're going to try to be able to help this.
I'll be glad to get to know that. And the judge, as you know, is always willing to help, and I say that because I think he is, he, he doesn't always let you know that he's willing to help, but he, he likes to do it.
Well, then, you know, the Senator, or Martha, will ask us to the county.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
So, we, we have to make some, it's going to take some effort on my part, and these guys' part to get this done. Uh, we've been talking about it for a long time, the bank is ready for us to not necessarily be there anymore, they're not kicking us out, and I will say this to you, the bank is never going to kick you out, I'm going to make that clear, but they would just assume that's to get, get our toys, because they have other plans. So, but they're not anti Senior Citizen Center, I can tell you that for sure. They are not quote fixing the building, I'll say that.
Every nine years, not one of them step a foot in my building.
Yes, so, I, I don't want to throw them under the bus, but definitely, it's time for us to get serious about getting something built.
The lot on Westwood, whatever, can discuss for the location, is big enough?
The what was going to be a fire station, the Dog Park, AKA, um, yeah, it's big enough, that's two acres. That's actually below, that may be four acres.
Uh. I would certainly rather.
We own it, we own it.
That's all, I'd rather put this thing, I would, there's no reason to buy it, and we've got a lot of it on our pay for.
Absolutely, and by the way, I forgot to tell you, because I want to keep everybody on the same page, I also asked Travis to take one, the eleven thousand square foot building, which of course, I knew would fit, but he didn't, and he couldn't do anything with the computer these days. We own two lots on Main Street, as you know, we inherited one, we got one for free, and we bought the other one. Those houses are gone, it's empty lots. The eleven thousand one went over onto two buildings in the old Bell House inn. The seventy-five hundred square foot building fit on that, those two lots, with the twenty, or, what's the setback, typical sunny?
Twenty.
So, it had a twenty foot setback, we're good to go, but the parking would have had to been on a little what we have, we, and we own this, uh, where the fire station was at one time. But what we don't own is the parking lot where the city hall used to own. Now, I have spoken to, uh, Mrs. Butler, and she is willing to work with us on nothing official, I've been trying to buy that forever, but she's not ready to sell it, but there is, there is reasons to believe that we could build a parking lot big enough for us and a parking lot that, that they utilize for, for clothing giveaway. It would just be somewhat separate, it would be a little bit of a walk, not a big walk, but a little bit of a walk to, to the center. But not that much, so there's, there's an option. And it fit the seventy-five hundred square foot, which is probably bigger than Main Street. I think. I think they're looking at about five, but I don't know. So, there's another piece of property that we don't have to buy. In the scheme of things, as our finance director told me, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for property is not a big deal when you're talking about three million dollar building, but it is a hundred fifty thousand dollars that could go for all the air conditioning and all the.
I hope we're all talking about a three million dollar.
Well, I do too, and I don't think we are due to what, I think you're talking about a two million dollar building if you had to pay for it. Because you can't, I mean, let's be honest, you can't build much. But, do we have to pay two million dollars? I'm hoping not. Now, I said that, we don't have any prices for anybody yet. I mean, there could be, there could be a very attractive steel building with brick and rock trim that's amen. So, yeah. But, but we have property, uh, like you said, there's that, there's one, there's a, the trail on a park, and then there's the, whoever just said that about, where else?
Westwood.
Westwood, which I hadn't even considered.
In two oh six Bell Road.
In two oh six Bell Road. Yes sir, to make it convenient. So, a lot of work to be done, a lot of discussions, I will, very, very soon, I'm waiting till after the holidays to get the contractors, contractors together, uh, to have, to get some input from. I may get nothing, they may get free pizza, and that's all I get. But I got a feeling somebody's going to step up to the plate, because they already have. Word is barely out, and we've got electrician, more or less, we've got a general contractor, and we have a plumber. So, I'll just do some tile guys, and stuff like that, you know.
I don't know if you can help with that.
And I don't know if there's a garage door to be on this thing or not, but if there is, you know.
We got a garage door gap.
We do. So, there's that, uh, I want it to, I want a building, and I think we all want a building that's very useful and, 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 uh, becoming for the city, and, and, and looks nice for you folks in the city, uh, but it's functional and does, and does a good job. And I think we can even probably get some, uh, one of the fixtures and things like that, so. I'm not planning on spending three million dollars by any means, but I think, I think we're going to, we're heading down the road, and with the state representative in the room, that can probably help us. State Senator Pitch is willing to help also, he's made that clear.
What are you giving him, a chair?
I know. So, that's my spiel, does anybody want to chime in? We can paint it, uh, forest green, I don't know, maybe we can get some help from the games there, I don't know. Anything else, gentlemen?
Is anybody in my center?
Folks?
Any questions?
Yeah, please, we want to hear from you.
I like the idea, it's just, to me, not just helpful at all. But seems to me like for aesthetics, visual in town, on Main Street would be, if you figure out how to put it where you can see it.
Anytime it's visible, I think is good for the community and good for, for these folks to be there. If you're, if you're tucking it away sometime, you take a little bit of, I don't know if you call it danger or not, but there is something about not being visible, but, you know, the one in Van Uren, even though it's almost four million dollars, and it would probably be six to build a day, it's kind of tucked away, it's off of Main, but it's back in there a little bit, and it's, I'm not saying it's risky at all, but it, 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 there is that, you want.
But I think also, mostly, if it could be a multi-use facility.
Sure, so, on that note, thank you for bringing that up, we, and I'm not talking to Lisa about this, but certainly, in my opinion, in the team, we were talking about this, this thing could be possibly not self-sufficient, but certainly, when you're not utilizing it, it, the city's going to own this facility. So, you're going to use it as your home, do all your activities, but when you're not, this could be a smaller version of a, of the Bell Park Division that we rent out for weddings and venues and birthday. The one in Bell Park is almost too big for birthday parties in those.
Or showers or things.
So, this facility, I think Tom's the one that came up with this, imagine that, the finance guy, saying, we build this thing, uh, capable of having birthday parties and wedding reception, or mistos, or whatever it is you want to have in it, when you're not utilizing it as, as the Senior Citizen Center. Never to take away with what you're doing, I mean, it will always be top priority that your bingo and everything that you do. And we'll go from there, but, but bringing in a little income, pay a lot to do with something else. Or, or leases enormous salaries, you know.
Yeah, of course, Bethany's, there's very many girls out almost every weekend.
Really?
I mean, they have something going on every weekend, but they're just big, and they got, you know.
Right. So you want to, so you want to build it with that in mind, that this could be something.
I mean, we don't want to keep on this building, if we just want something where we can figure our center, each senior's and.
Sure.
We, only thing we're asking for is a drive-through, where we can let them out and train.
Well, so the drive-through's important, Van Uren has too, they got a drive-through for your, for your pickup and delivery of human beings.
Yeah.
And then they have a pickup for, uh, a drive-through for pickup and delivery of the food that's going out, so.
Well, we put it at the back door.
Those could be doubled as one, but, I mean, up there, they had a lot of money, apparently, and so they did both, but, definitely, definitely an overhead, you know, we've been talking about that ever since you went to Farmers Bank, that if you had a place to drop the, the folks off and not get wet.
We've been, we're still doing the drive-through at the back door for people that don't still come in, we still have people going.
You're squeezing through the kitchen?
Yeah.
Wow.
But we still, we do about eight or nine lunches out the back door.
Okay.
Our numbers are coming back out, more, more people coming to our center, and I'm hoping that we start getting more and more, and so.
Go with this number on you, just like you did everybody else on our.
But we don't want to forget the most, I think, important thing, is the bill, is that thing delivered on.
Absolutely, yes ma'am. Absolutely.
They.
I, I'm actually serving on, I'm serving on the Area Agency on Aging Board, have been for over a year now. I didn't know about all that until I got on board, and that's a big deal, that's a huge deal.
Ours just went up from sixty to ninety-five people, so we're getting more and more.
I see your gentleman out every, and we stop visiting middle of the road, because he's that kind of guy, so.
Let's get everyone in this, but like some may need that.
Absolutely, some of us sooner than later.
They may need that, but.
Yes ma'am.
My mom has a best, but I think it's pretty good thing.
You bet. You know my dad would be down there five times a day. But those cars, the ladies that cheated him his car, I still need to talk to some ladies about. We, we, I, again, I'm speaking for everybody unless they speak up, we, we're going to make this happen as soon as we can. And anytime you have ideas such as three or two, uh. Three, I'm sorry, I don't worry, yes sir. Uh, seriously, because I mean, until Daniel said something about Westwood, I completely forgot that we've got four acres over there. Uh, a little, kind of tucked away a little bit, but, any, anything could, can, was better than what you have, I think, if it's fair to say. So, we're going to work on it, right? Anyone?
Yes. I like the idea of whole-time purpose.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to give Tom some kudos on that, when it works out. It's, it's a, it's a big deal, it's important, it's, I'm sorry.
That was Tammy's.
Was that Tammy?
I don't get credit for much.
Everybody, we'll give everybody.
I'm trying.
We'll give everybody kudos, that's right, it was him.
He was a good.
She's, she's in charge of bringing out the, the one in Bell Park, so.
May I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I just really am so happy I came tonight and know how seriously you are taking our situation. So I just want to say we.
Thank you. Thank you very much, God bless you, and, and I mean that, you guys are dear to my heart, so. We'll do what we can as soon as we, as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes sir.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank y'all.
Yes sir, thank you. You made my night. All right, well, we want to thank you all very much for coming. All right, uh, gin additions? Uh, we actually have one, but the good news is, we're going to take one off, so number nine, if someone has a plan. And we'll table, I guess I can wait, and then we're going to table number seven for tonight. Chief is also on three days, so. So, number one, two.
Good to see you.
We'll take three off. I, yeah, I added two, Sunny.
Okay.
Mr. Goldstein, did you take off three? Huh?
Hold on one second.
Okay. Sir? Take off number three, okay? Taking off three, you're going, okay. Any more?
Mayor, I'm not.
Yes sir, absolutely.
I just didn't know if anybody had any questions for me before I left.
How do you come up with any?
What? I don't know, I'm trying, you know, I can't. If anybody has any legislative update questions, we can have a special session.
You talk to us, brothers, why?
Yeah, so, you know, the way that works, so the congressional districts are decided by the legislative body. So we vote on the US congressional districts, how that math looks, and it was like her and cats, you know. If we'd done it here normally, in a normal timeframe, and we, this is done every ten years with the census. Normally, that's done during the course of business of the regular session, but because of the pandemic, none of the numbers were available when we were in session to address that. And so, we needed the numbers until this fall, and so we had to come down there for a special session. Well, you get us all in a, in a group down there in Little Rock, we've had a break from the Capitol, we only have one thing to talk about, and, and, uh, it was kind of a mess, I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of agglom, a lot of discussing, a lot, there were probably, I probably saw twenty different versions of maps dividing up the state, Arkansas into four different regions. Uh, you know, it, it was an interesting process for me to watch. Uh, a lot of people had a lot of passion out of the way, it affects us here in this community. Um, Sebastian County's been divided for the last ten years between two congressional districts, between the fourth and the third. So we've had long act in the, in our region. So, we've had WAMAC in the, in our region here, and then we get South Sebastian County, that's been western. There was a strong contingency of folks that wanted to try to keep Sebastian County whole, but also, very passionately wanted to keep Sebastian County as much as they could in the third congressional district. Certainly, the leadership in this community in Fort Smith area was pretty passionate about trying to make that happen. The way the population bases were worked out, you gotta have it divided evenly within a certain deviation. And it was, it ended up, the map that ended up coming forward, I opposed that map because of the divide in Crawford, uh, Sebastian County, but it passed. And so, we're gonna end up with more of Sebastian County in the third district than we had in the last ten years, but there's still gonna be a portion of us in the fourth. Now, you know, the upside of that is you got two congressmen instead of one, the downsides are splitting that a little bit. Honestly, Representative Richmond, Marcus Richmond, who represents that southern part, sort of haggling, man, so, those guys weren't real vocal about having opinions one way or the other. The real haggling is over the second congressional district, which is where Placid County is, and, you know, I'm sure the version of the map that's passed is gonna be contested. It is unlikely, I think, that that map doesn't get challenged in the court system, and, you know, the map that passed divided Placid County into three different districts, and that's the only county that got divided up that way. That's a little, you know, a little auspicious, you might say, and so I think there's a good chance that map gets overturned. If it does, we'll spend two years under status quo, and we'll be tasked with a different map, so.
Status quo in what we are?
What we've been for the last ten years, we'll do that for another, another tee. I will say that all Greenwood and the current version, all Greenwood School District is in the third, which was different than it was, so at least there's that consolidation. The redistricting for the state senate and house districts, that's a whole different, you know, ball of wax. That's done by the Board of Deportionment, which is the governor, the secretary of state, and attorney general, and essentially, they get a running, they got people working for them, drawing these maps based on the census numbers, and they sit down and haggle and write, and that's done, it seems like it's done over a real quick period of time. They've been working on those maps for months, on, you know, what they think are projected numbers. I probably saw more versions of those maps than of the congressional maps. And of course, Friday, they came out with what was the first proposed version, and that's likely to be what it looks like. I don't know if y'all had a chance to see that. So, it'll be out for public comment for thirty days, it won't be official until the public comment period's, and there may be somebody raises things, you know, and it's like the, trying, the same way with these districts, there has to be about thirty thousand people ballparked in every house district, and actually about eighty-five thousand people ballparked in every senate district. So, anytime you move a precinct out of one area, it affects the whole map. So, even if people are looking at this area of state saying, hey, we're pretty content with the way that looks, if they start messing with stuff in South Arkansas, East Arkansas, it has a ripple effect that's likely to have an effect, you know, on our region. But I suspect that, you know, as opposed to congressional maps, which I used to get challenged, I suspect this map is probably gonna be mapped in that way. For us here in Greenwood, you know, that would put us, from a senate standpoint, right now, our senator is Terry Ross. This would put us in Jerry Stufel's district, the current map. So, there is gonna be a new district that's created out of Crawford County, that there was some discussion about that district running south in Greenwood, in which case, there'd be a district with no senator. That district looks like it's gonna run north upwards, Greenwood and Health, so if it goes out as it looks right now, we'll have our current, the current senator in our district would be Jerry Stufel.
I thought Pitch was.
He's our senator, right, yeah, wait, sorry, Terry, you're right, Pitch is our senator, Terry's just the south part of the county. It would be, so, no, you're right, no Pitch, you're right, Pitch is our senator, if Fort Smith is gonna be, we won't be in Fort Smith's district. So, Fort Smith's gonna have its own district, Justin Boyd's gonna have to run for that. We'll be in this new district, it would be Greenwood, run along Highway twenty-two, take you up Charleston Parish, ZB, all the way up to Clarksville. And then Terry, who used to be traditionally, this was where we ran south, Terry's gonna have some of, a little sliver of South Sebastian County, and then he'll go down towards Mina. So, Sebastian, our school district, we'll end up with probably three senators, who would have probably worked out, because Justin Boyd, you know, some of our school district is in Fort Smith, some of our school district runs down towards Dayton and Mansville. The state representative district that I currently hold, currently, it runs from Mulberry over to Dyer, Kidler, and has that portion of Crawford County, and then comes down through the back of Arlington, and then circles into Greenwood and ends over here sort of just west of town. The new proposed district cuts out all of Crawford County and adds in all of that Riley Farms area, and then runs all the way through midland to the Oklahoma line, south of Packett, north of, north of Hartford, in that more between area. So, in some ways, that's better, because now, you know, all of Greenwood School District, right now, we have Uvans, myself, Richmond, Boyd Crawford, I think we have maybe five representatives that touch the Greenwood School District. The city, the city itself, I think, probably just has me. Now, there'll be a district that mostly is incorporated, almost all of it in the school district, the back end part, which I think is good for our community, I think that gets, I think in some ways, our interests are more aligned with that part of the county as opposed to the part of Crawford County, that's sort of up there in the Almond School District, Mulberry School District. And so, I think from the standpoint of a, of a house district, I think that ends up looking, looking better. Again, all that's sort of still a little bit up in the air, I mean, it won't be official for another probably month. You know, as far as my intentions, you know, I tend to continue to try to represent this community and will. If for some reason Senator Stufel were to decide not to run, I'd entertain that, if he decides to run, I'm not likely to run this year, he's a good friend. Sonny Jackson's done a good job, he's been down there for many terms, in which case, I'd run for house again. So, you know, I wanna continue representing this community, I wanna continue to be a part of what I'm doing. I enjoy it, I think I'm doing a good job for our community, and so, you know, hopefully, look forward to another couple of years representing every one. It'll be interesting, I'm sure, there are, you know, whatever I decide to do, I'll put a comment on it, so it'll be, I'll have to figure out a way to do it.
Charlie Derry does not have phones.
That's okay.
Maybe you have to make those decisions and weigh our votes and questions.
So, the filing deadline would be, I think, in February, February, March timeframe? So, you know, we won't know exactly who's running until you write the check and put in the filing fee in February. Once, once you commit your filing fee, then the primary will be back. So, this is gonna happen pretty quick, as far as the election cycle goes, because we're getting this information late. You really didn't even know, you didn't know what district you were gonna be in, probably you'd have to be running down to Boombah, or whatever. Unfortunately, my district's pretty similar to what it is, and represents a group of people I've grown up with, so hopefully, I'll have a good chance of.
Back to the congressman, you said it could contest it, and probably will be.
I think that would be contested.
We still have WAMAC, as it is.
As it is, we have WAMAC, and I don't think that'll change. I, there was, so, the only way we could have kept Sebastian County whole in any of the negotiations down there was to move Sebastian County completely to the fourth district, in which would have put us in, I mean, I think Westwood, WAMAC, and both of our guys, I've definitely had a good relationship with both of them, but, but as far as kind of who we fit with better, we fit a lot better with Northwest Arkansas, probably, than Pine Bluff, Texarkana, this is, you know, his district, fourth, it's a huge district, because you've got such an absence of population in South Arkansas, there's just nobody down there. They're losing the whole state senate seat down there to Northwest Arkansas, because you've got it divided up, and so, yeah, that, the, when you look at the congressional district maps, you've got the second and the third, and then you've got the first and the fourth, they're just these huge, you know, huge districts that run all over the state, so, I can see, I can see why people are passionate about trying to keep as much of Sebastian County as you can, or makes sense. Plus, WAMAC, you got WAMAC's position well, you know, he's got a lot to see moving now, and if, for some reason, you know, the Republicans regain the house, which is, you know, is a possibility, it'd be a great condition to pass a little bit for us.
I don't wanna mention anybody's name, but that last one you mentioned, mayor may not owe the city two million dollars, so. Promise he made about six pieces of orange about six years ago.
Well, I don't, I'll see what you're holding to.
Please do, I send everybody there, and he's like, I'm not talking to you anymore, mayor.
Do y'all have any other questions? Yeah, I appreciate y'all, y'all know how to find me, anybody needs me, y'all know that, if anybody needs me, y'all just call me, you know.
Thanks, buddy.
All right, thanks, guys, y'all take care, appreciate it.
Thank you.
No idea where we are. Number two, no, number one, or actually, number two, with planning. All right, planning building ordinance, your building place and ordinance, twenty dash ten mobile food, we're tabling that, Mark, where you're done?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna talk about it a little bit, or just table it?
Yeah, we talked about it just a little bit, this, this ordinance that the mayor put together that is massaging our mobile food, uh, visiting ordinance, and we've got kind of a draft copy drawn up, we will present it to the planning commission, and let them go, and I'll bring it back to you guys, and then we'll go through the mobile reading, if need be, and.
Let me, let me touch on that just real quick to make it public, for sure, that we are happy and condoning our food vendors to be in the city. Under those circumstances, do we not want them in our community? We want them here, but we want them all on the same page, and all abiding by the same controls, and we want to be in control of that, their water, their sewer, everything, and so, everybody has to be, we want an equal playing ground. And when I say that, so, Sunny and both of those guys, like, they're casing, Hunter, both have been working on this and wanting to get it together, and then, like you said, just taking it to the planning for their, for their dissection and bringing it back to you.
So, mayor and I visited a couple, I'm up northwest Arkansas, the mobile food courts, and looked at those, and we've had a couple of people here that have expressed interest in, in doing something like that, so, okay, we're looking at it from different ways. And I, before we bring it to you, I would like the planning commission to look at it, put in there two cents, because it does involve some zoning, and we'll create a new zone for them, or utilize what we got, so.
And Sunny, we're gonna have to visit with Mr. Marsh about a certain coffee place up there too, that he can talk to you about that later.
Yes, yes, we're taking that from here.
I have one comment about this. On the penalty phase of this, you know, you have the first ten days, twenty-five dollars, the next ten days, fifty dollars, every day after that, hundred dollars. I'd like to see all that get narrowed down. I mean, if you're in violation, let's not drag it out for thirty days, shut it down, you know, up the fine and shorten the window, in my opinion.
You had any?
Do you really know?
It seems like a lot of work in our little area out there on Timmer Spur. I mean, we can talk about all the locations and what's going on, is that the other resolution, but, are we briefed out to those folks? Hey, y'all are kind of meeting what we're wanting?
Well, I have not talked to that gentleman, I don't know if these guys have or not, that's the property, obviously, and he is doing a lot. I pulled in the other day, and I know, I thought, I'm driving a Mustang, I thought I was going off to the fall off land, but it's actually safe, and I thought I was gonna drag it, it's not, whoever did the grading on that.
I said, watch them build.
Doing what they were doing, so.
Well, I know it's private property, and I'm assuming it's some, some sort of commercial in that area.
I think, I think it is, I don't know where we are on that, Sunny, on the.
I see too, it's commercial. I just hate when they gotta go through a whole bunch of putting in work, and then I was coming in saying, yeah, no, that'd be so.
Yeah, and we're, we, we, again, so we're.
We're taking that into consideration.
Yeah, our goal is to make all this good for everybody.
That's, I mean, I don't even draw that location, like, you really have some kind of western system there.
Well, and I think that's his heart's desire, is for somebody to come in and swoop in and buy that whole thing, and put up a proms or western system or something. But, in the meantime, and he's, he's actually come on the other side of this, the east side of this housing, and started to grab work there.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Now, he has asked, and I'll just do this publicly, I guess, he has asked my office and Sunny's office to consider a curb, not a curb cut, I guess, but a driveway coming on to.
Even Liberty Drive.
On the Liberty Drive. We can't get him to give us specifics, and we can't just say, you're good to go, unless he gives us specifics. I'm assuming the desire for that is for future, either more food vendors back there, or somebody coming in.
One bank or something.
Because I love, it makes sense, I mean, if I'm pulling in there, I'd like to pull in off of Liberty Drive, off of Timmer Spur, or Timmer Spur. So, we're talking to him about that, and if he can give us a little bit more details, instead of just giving him the green light to do it.
I just hope we're kind of in a little bit of communication with the act, doing so much work.
Sure, we had to, we did have to, and I say we, again, these guys had to go out immediately, about two, about a month ago, and assess the folks that were putting in these vending trucks and trailers, because everybody was out of compliance. Everybody is still not in compliance, because this ordinance is oddly written, to say the least. So, we don't, we're not gonna change it to fit what they're doing necessarily, but there's some things in there that are just, need to be stricken all the way. So, does that make sense? But we found out, and I did it myself, I got up and looked, and a couple of them were just way out of compliance. And, but the thing, but the good part is, most of them, if not all of them, are trying really hard to be compliant. I'll say, and I wanna give kudos to the Japanese, whatever that is, over there across from Casey's, next to Casey's, those kinds have been in this office, my office, twice, and I thought I had myself explained, I don't speak very good English, as you know.
Right.
And so, we had a little communication issue, but I did put them in touch with Travis Hawkins and say, go help these guys, and Travis is just all out of back chips, but you don't know that already. So, he goes out to try to help them, and he calls me, he says, we're having translation issues on the phone, and I think he got them compliant in the sewer water department, because they had hooked up really bad to that sewer back there. But they did not mean that, because the guy before him, it might have been them, I don't know, the trailer before them was hooked up the same way. So, they're no longer, they're no longer hooked that way. So, say all that to say we're working, getting them all on the same page. And I don't know if any of them have spayed food, and I'm a frequent.
That's the key.
Yeah, yeah, it's all good stuff. And the ones we visit Northwest Arkansas, I've been up there twice now to do this, Tanny one day, and with Sunny another day, and some of these things, some of these, I like to call it, we're gonna name ours Greenwood Food Block, by the way, I'm hoping that would work well. Thank you, it's a beer thing.
I like it.
Some of those up there are done perfectly, I mean, they got it going on. It's nice, it's clean, they got this going in the sewer, they got a water tank, they got all their stuff, and the other ones are not so good. So, we wanna be that one, I mean, if we go that way, or this gentleman about Warren, is that we wanna make sure that everybody's happy. I went up to one, I went up to two different ones to talk to them, and I said, I had a guarantee of my within the health department, or somebody checking their license, I was from another town, and by the time I got through, this lady said, where are you? Because I need another truck out, and I said, we're about an hour and a half away, she said, I don't think so. Yeah, we're working on it. So, we'll bring this back to you after it goes through the planning, and let y'all do your thing. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, number two is Water Waste Water Commission, this is the five hundred dollars per town, the rebate first reading. Mr. John, you wanna address it, or just let them?
Just let them do their thing.
Okay, so this is, I was in the meeting, they, John brought this to the attention of the Water Waste Water Commission, at your request for them to answer your questions, put them in the ordinance, and then bring it back to you. This is, I felt fairly confident, and I think Mr. Derry did.
Yeah, I see that I've got an error typo of the dollar signs, that have an upper sign, section one, that's four ninety-two, so that needs to be corrected, and on section two, since four ninety-two is being repealed, it needs to say the five hundred, they're, they're, five hundred dollars, needs to say a five hundred dollar additional sewer cap fee, strikes that that were.
On section two.
Section two.
Two.
So, mayor, let me ask you this.
Yes sir.
I called, I called the mayor, we walked into Sunny's office, for a hundred and twenty bucks. And my thought that day was, this thing, I'm not sure this is the right. Because now we've just created. Because now we've just created, if you do this, basically, you create a five hundred dollar deposit. That's refundable. When, when this first came up, a few months back, whenever it was, I was thinking incentives. And what was the discussion that we had, whenever that was, two or three weeks ago, um, was to look at our permit fees and build an incentive off of that. You know, your permanent fees are based on what you built, side structure, how many did this and that, and all that, you know? So, the bigger something that you're building, the more you're incentivized, in theory, if you did that correctly. You know, this just becomes now an administrative, give me five hundred dollars, and I'll give it back to you, this stuff, once we give you a stipend. You're going to do that for everybody. If you're going to do that for everybody that does it, then you might as well get rid of the five hundred dollar fee or something. I mean, you've just created work for.
Tom, Tom's good. He wants to.
You do it for the pavilion already, but there is one in here that I do want to point out, it is section three. It does say in here that forever, if the five hundred fee cap, your fees not reimbursed to pay me for whatever reason, shall remain in the sewer O and N fund, it says for sewer improvements only. That would be a restriction by ordinance, and we can't keep it in sewer O and N. It would have to be in a separate account, and it would have to go specifically for sewer improvements, because you're restricted. I would not recommend you do that. That would be additional work for us.
So, I don't know, Sonny, Hunter, Sonny, if y'all did any work on that after that discussion, and any talks about that, or where'd that go?
As far as doing reduced permit fees?
Hunter, would you come up for it?
Yeah. As, as far as reduced permit fees, is that what you're talking about?
The discussion we had that day.
I personally wouldn't recommend that, because that's our only source of revenue.
Of the county sales tax.
Yeah. As far as the, the impact fees, it's been called, that's just something that they've already getting correct through the tax.
What you could be doing is you would be taking it from a revenue-producing, for-profit entity, water sewer, which has recourse for that money. They are right now a cash cow, if you will, pardon the pun. But they would also, you're, you're also then shifting it to a general operating, um, department, which then would be using, they have to make up that revenue loss, because that would be their revenue to operate their department, mostly because of what's being shifted over to them for county sales tax. So, you would be putting a burden on the general department, which right now is pretty much taxed.
Well, and I certainly don't recommend that we reimburse all permit fees. That, that's not what I'm suggesting at all. In a some percentage, I don't even know what permit fees all are. I don't know, you know.
Their recourse later, if they are having deficits in their budget, would be the increased permit fees. You're just, you're delaying it.
I think, I think the administrative issue would be more burdens to them, but than what you're suggesting, than it is to this, as to him.
That's no big deal for me. The deposit is no big deal.
I mean, I don't do what he does, but I think him having to figure that on every permit, and you have that percentage, is a bigger deal than this thing applies.
Okay, so then, is this really an incentive?
Sure.
For a builder?
It's being asked for by them, by the builders. Yeah, this is their.
It's their request.
So, whatever. I mean, you know, I mean, if, if it's one guy building a house, I guess, like that, you know, if you're building a, what, it's two hundred thousand dollar house.
The water tap fee is still three hundred dollars, correct?
Water, no, eight fifty.
Eight fifty. Finally, it's included in that.
Okay.
What's included, do you think?
Five hundred.
So, this five hundred is eight fifty?
Is included, the eight fifty.
It's fine. It's the first thing that we've done in my lifetime, to do anything to incentivize anybody to build anything in the city, in my opinion. Now, I've not been there as long as you guys, but I'm talking about my harvest tenure and my mayor tenure. We've just not been there, and.
What is.
This is, this is pretty simple.
What's our rank in the safest city deal again, in the state?
We're up there, three or four last time.
Or the school.
Number two, I think.
The schools ranked two in the state? Those are probably your incentives to build.
Well, sure, they're incentives, but you don't take what incentives you got and take them away, and then not consider another one. I mean, yeah, they're definitely incentives.
Well, they're probably the only incentives to build.
Well, that's, they are. They are the only incentives. So, that's, that's how I would look at it.
What did ordinance.
I don't understand why this is the hard.
Four twenty-three and, uh, four ninety-two.
What are them?
What are they?
Orders.
About what?
Sewer tax.
The one of them put in the five hundred dollar fee. One of them put a five hundred dollar fee in there.
Yeah.
Four twenty-three is three fifty, and then four ninety-two is five.
What you're getting is a recommendation back from the Water Sewer Commission, presented back to you after you asked them to answer questions and put it in form, and they did that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to get clear here, four twenty-three is the fee, four ninety-two, yeah. If you just repeal both of these.
Just going to repeal just four ninety-two. We're still going to do sewer tax fees at three fifty, but the five hundred was the extra fee. At the time, we didn't have ones in sales tax, and it was.
It says they're both being repealed or replaced. So, my point is, we're not replacing the, there's a three hundred dollar fee and a.
Three hundred fifty and a five hundred.
Five hundred dollar fee. This is only talking about the five hundred dollar rebate.
All along, same.
If you just repeal the two of those ordinances with this, now you don't have those other fees. You just, you don't have the ordinance to collect the fees start with.
So, that, so that wording is not correct?
Yeah.
The section one is not.
Correct wording.
Yeah, that's correct.
But Mayor, I guess what I'm getting at is, and maybe this is mechanism good, I'm not saying it isn't. What we're, what we're driving at here, I think, is if you do all the things that follow all our rules and regulations, and everything gets inspected, and Sonny gives you a certificate of occupancy, we'll give you five hundred bucks.
Right.
Right.
You're reading that.
If we, if we okay the water sewer.
Yeah, he, he said that. Everything's.
I mean, everything's got to pass muster, and Sonny's going to say, "I checked all the boxes, and here you go." If you follow it all.
And you can't get that. You can't get your certificate of occupation until you do that anyway. So, yes, that's correct.
Yeah. I mean, if you, you can either do this, or just say, we, instead of screwing up the other two ordinances, we could go say, we could go make an ordinance that says, "If you follow all the rules and regulations in our planning department, and we give you a certificate of occupancy, we'll give you five hundred bucks."
In essence, that's what it is.
Went up, and leave all the rest to that.
Well, yeah, because that needs to be stricken in, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Leave all the.
Yes, I don't think you do.
You're saying just charge all the fees, and then have a whole separate ordinance that just says, "Once you, we get the green light, check mark, the red really gets cut, here's how it works." A separate ordinance is not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, you're saying.
We can say it's revating this sewer tax fee.
You're tied to this. Sonny can tie it to electrical permits, or whatever he wants, other regulation that you didn't follow.
But where's the five hundred dollars from the sewer, or what, general?
Well, it's kept back from the fees they pay. I mean, whichever one you want to take it from.
I understand what you're saying.
Right, not a good word.
That's not a good word.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with Ken, that, you know, we're already offering a lot of incentives here by having, uh, a safe city, a good school, a good fire department. Yeah, I think that, I think, again, when this was instituted back in ninety-three, from ninety-three to two thousand, or whatever, you know, the city doubled its size, it wasn't a hindrance then.
Things were different then. Nobody else was offering incentives, and things, that's a whole different ballgame back then.
No, I don't think so.
Well, it is. You think that or not. It is. It was.
There wasn't a, yeah, you probably won there back then.
I mean, so you're saying, because we grew back then, we don't want to do anything to grow now? Is that, that's basically what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that, again, you know, this, the way I understood the five dollar impact fee was to, uh, also, uh, build out infrastructure in areas that wasn't there, that the citizens have been here paying taxes for the last, you know?
An impact fee is to slow down and to, to, to keep things from getting out of hand. That's what an impact fee is for.
You needed the impact fee, because you did not.
There was no other mechanism.
Back then, in order to fund the growth, to fund the infrastructure. So, you use the impact fee in order to keep up with what that development needed. But now you have a permanent one percent sales tax, so that moves that point back in nineteen ninety-three. We've gone over this to basically inform you that the times have changed. They are sitting on one point five million dollars a year coming from that one percent sales tax. Plus, we just gave them, we are providing. So, it is different. It's different now than it was back then.
And so, all of our citizens have our impact fee?
Pardon?
All of our citizens have water to serve?
That's a whole different.
What does that have to do with this?
We're talking about.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're funding and we're allowing, you know, saying, oh, new people
that, you know, hadn't lived here, or whatever, necessarily, for those who are trying to attract new residents anywhere, presenting, well, you know, you're going to get water and sewer.
Mr. Brown, you are so repeating things that have been talked about for five different meetings, and I stood there, I stood there and preached a sermon about, this is not just about new construction. I'm as dead set against getting sewer, where we haven't had it for a hundred years, as I am this. It's all, it all needs to be taken care of. So, do not even make me sound like it's about doing it for new construction and not taking care of both. The Water Waste Water Commission did exactly what you asked me to do, and they brought it back to you for a coup. Now, it's not, it's not written correctly, there's some stuff in there, but to say or to imply that me or anybody else that's not worried about homes getting served, that hasn't had it, is ridiculous.
Well, there is the thing, that, that when they came here and proposed this development, did they come here with a stipulation that, hey, we're going to put this development, but we need, you know, we need some kind of.
He has already said, Mr. Lloyd has said in this bill the room more than four times, they're going to build this no matter what.
My point is, they're.
What's the sewer tax fee for horse man?
Uh, theirs is variable on some different factors, but if you're on, if the sewer lines on the same side of the road, the house being built, it averages around twelve hundred dollars.
I think, I think.
Okay, I have a simpler solution.
Go ahead.
Just rip it all the way to four ninety-two.
Period.
Period. Which gets you right to five hundred dollars. Nobody's keeping up with anything.
That's a concern in itself.
Hey, y'all are, y'all are way overthinking this.
Thinking. I've got a thing in my office that says, "It's not this hard."
Right, and you're aware of thinking, all the amounts due, as long as they abide by the rules. We've had problems in the past, that people have not abided by the rules. All their amounts due, they end up, everybody, is when they get done, if they, if they burn anything, Hunter, in the planning department, we're going to give them five hundred bucks back.
Thank you.
It's not rocket science. If they screw up, if they screw up along the line, they're not going to get the five hundred bucks back.
It's not easy to do anyway, Mr. Baker. I mean, what, this is before you.
Because that night, the other night.
I mean, you're not going to get a certificate of occupancy if you don't pass it.
Listen to them. Listen to them. Finish. Because I was starting to entertain it, all around me and working over five hundred bucks. I mean, five hundred bucks don't go across the street.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But the whole thing is, Daniel, it's a point where you can keep them honest. You got these guys, some of these guys that don't want to abide by the rules. Keep this little little place, it's simple. When they test it, and Hunter checks out, and get all their stuff done, it's a way for them to say, "Okay, I abide by the rules, it's going to give me five hundred bucks back." So, it's not hard.
We asked, we asked that you consider this, and then, and then two commissions, or one commission, council, commission, back to council, to say, to answer your questions and give you something, and then somebody decides to change it again, to delay it for another sixty, ninety days. And I don't understand. It's, it's five hundred dollars, they are not for, they, the Water Waste Water Commission, is not for, they have in place a mechanism to make the money. This has not been heard of. They themselves voted to do it unanimously, and brought it back to you. And you put a commission in place to have them give you their ideas of what they want done, and you, every time, you decide to change it up and not let it pass for some ridiculous reason.
Mayor, I'm not suggesting we make changes for the purpose of delaying it. I'm making changes for the purpose of it being right.
Then let's do it. Is that a motion?
I mean, I'm just pointing out that.
I'm not talking about you. Would you make a motion, and we do that?
That we make. It's the only change.
I agree with Daniel, the repeal of all those, you're, you're retooling everything.
I think, just take it off. Take that off. You're not repealing it.
Right, we're not repealing those, because it's just taking all the fees out. But, the thought process behind, and I stood right there at that table, and Tom was sitting there, and I was the one, very one that said, and I know it didn't sit well, but if five hundred dollars makes or breaks anybody on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house, it doesn't even be built. But, my, my thought was, when I said it, is the fact that we've had stuff that wasn't bonded before that shouldn't have been bonded, we've had the issues that hadn't been ever held in fixifier, but it was a way to make sure they were doing the checks and balances, so that when they got done, they get the five hundred bucks back. I mean, it's, it's way, way overthought.
The only side of one other thing, the biggest issue was, you guys collectively said, that we've had trouble in the past, where a developer comes in and doesn't finish a project, they have to. So, to make them finish a project, that was an incentive for them to do that. Even if they just did phase one, and it was only seventy-one homes, as the mayor pointed out, that's seventy-one new homes. Okay, so you, you can give them that on, we talked about on a, on a phase basis, or on an individual home basis, but whatever they build and they ship back, is an additional resident coming into the city. So.
So, we're not going to try to bond things anymore?
Yes, that is, yes, we're bonding.
Okay, here's the same procedure. Here's my suggestion. Actually, I have one question first. Section three, what do you want that to say?
I don't want it to say that you're restricting your for sewer improvements only.
Yeah, just strike out, put a period after sewer O and N.
Great. Sewer O and N, period.
Mayor, Mr. Hamby and the council, I'm not sure exactly what y'all are talking about here, but I see all over the city, where there was supposed to be a lot of neighborhoods that were put in, basically, with no sidewalks. That was included in the impact. The impact fee is saying, if you don't put in sidewalk, you're going to get pinbacks. So, you've got a lot of neighborhoods here that were supposed to have had sidewalks, that do not. Is there any way to go back and get the money? No. I think what y'all are talking about is, if somebody comes in and puts some substandard material in, you can say, "You're not getting the money back, and you're not getting the funding, until you get your right equipment in here." It sounds pretty simple. It's, uh, I mean, I'm just sitting here listening to it, but it's simple to say, "You're putting money upfront to say you're going to do the right job, which you said you're going to do. If you don't do it, you don't get anything back. If you do everything you're supposed to do, you get your money back." And that's all I have to say about it. It seems pretty simple.
Well, somebody explain to me what bonding in a project is then.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, you want to talk about bonding of a subdivision or a project?
Thank you, sir.
Something we've never done is get any money out of stuff that's supposed to be bonded.
We got one on this Bell Road, we need to take on a bond.
Hundred sixty-six thousand. Close question, Mayor.
I'm just trying to, I'd like to know the difference between bonding and five hundred dollar rebate.
Uh, bonding will go on just like it always has, when, uh, subdivision like this one, how many of y'all come in and they'll bond the entire subdivision?
If you remember, there was a project on, on next to Alpha Package, and it was supposed to come in, and he could not get a bond, and he went away, because he did not obtain a bond. We would not let him, we would not.
The board agency owned it.
Correct. And we were not going to allow him a permit to build without the bond. So, that's still in place.
Well, and so, once everything is cleared, and through the subdivision, whether if we do it in phases, or for the total subdivision, then those bonds will, will be released after everything is signed off, and a year passes. everything is signed off and a year passes.
This one is tied to a rebate. The difference is that, I mean, we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna have double protection. The bond protects us from leaving, being left unfinished or whatever.
For example, Linwood, that, Linwood is bonded for the streets and the sidewalk and street lights and all that. Until all that is complete, that bond is there. If they walk away tomorrow, we recall that bond, and we have enough money to pay the street, put in sidewalk, and put in street lights.
What, you're saying until all the commercial properties are developed?
Well, as we know, the, the Linwood, where the triplexes are, they're all built.
Ten on that side.
Well, you got, you got ten more coming in.
Commercial spacing out, we're gonna have the same amount of triplexes spacing.
Now, he's finishing out three on the same side that the others are on, and he's gonna do ten on the other side. So the commercial properties don't matter for the bonding deals? Once they come in with a project that they were gonna do for that, then it would be bonded, because you don't know what, what the bonding would be, what, you know, what any product is. So when they give you the plan for, say, the commercial part, then you would figure what the cost of that part would be, and then they would bond it.
I was just trying, I'm just seeing the difference of this five hundred dollars after all the box and check versus the bonding deal, after all the...
And something you said a little while ago with Tim about, about the schools and in city, uh, when, when Greenwood had its big growth, you know, our school boundaries have never changed. Remember what was in that boundary then? It was just Greenwood, but now Fort Smith has moved into that boundary and Fort Chatham. And so all those homes up there have sucked the life out of Greenwood, basically, and its growth. You know, I moved here in two thousand nine, and I moved here for school.
Right.
If Caffey Crossing had been what it is now, you know, that's probably where we would look at closer, because it's closer to Fort Smith, it's closer to Chili's and Elector and, you know, I use it. But, you know, I fell in love with Greenwood, and so that's where we moved. But, but now, you know, Fort Smith has moved into our school district. And you can go to Caffey, up on Tad Collie and all that, and buy a house, and you run to Greenwood, your kids go to Greenwood, and you might not ever come to the downtown Greenwood for anything. And so that's kind of what, what, you know, has changed over the, the time that I've been in Greenwood. And, you know, I, I wasn't as fortunate as you guys were in, in, born and raised here, you know, but I still may be moving. At my age, I'm pleased to move.
I just, I think we still reap the benefits of, as far as tax base goes from all the folks that live in...
As I said, in North Little Island, and they found out we were moving up to this area, every teacher in, in the kids' schools says, go to Greenwood, right, go to Greenwood. So we need some...
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. ...
All right, here's my proposed motion. In your title, strike from repealing to four ninety-two. That will leave you a title that says, an ordinance establishing a five hundred dollar sewer tie-on fee rebate on all new residential construction for other purposes. Strike section one. And I make a motion that be placed. What about?
It's a problem.
Yeah, section three.
Section three, strike for sewer improvements.
Yeah, but there's, that's to do something amending for anything that isn't known. I know, but it says in there that five hundred dollars is for sewer improvements.
Oh, four ninety-two is a five hundred dollar sewer improvement.
Yeah, proceeds shall be used for sewer improvement, um, in four ninety-two. And that's why I have it in there.
Okay, then, so the title needs to be...
For an offer in place.
An ordinance amending ordinance five ninety, or four ninety-two.
Four ninety-two.
Four ninety-two.
Ordinance amending four ninety-two.
Establishing a five hundred dollar... Section one, ordinance four ninety-two is hereby amended. Section three, for sewer improvements only be struck.
Let's take care of your concerns, three.
No, it just established, just talks about sewer tax.
I make the motion that be placed on its first reading by Title Only, and I would ask that all those big reviews before the next meeting to make sure that all jives with those three.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown.
Hello.
Mr. Baker.
Hello.
Mr. Powell. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Lance Terry.
I like to break that time, I guess.
Right, the passes by the mayor, majority, and ordinance amending ordinance four ninety-two establishing a five hundred dollar sewer tie-on fee rebate on all new residential construction.
Number three has been stricken from the agenda. Number four is animal control. Orders revealing replacement of the sixteen to seventeen regulated animals for breeding. Mr. Casey.
Kind of opens some up a bit easier.
Sir?
Oh.
Um, nothing super major. The biggest part of it was removing some of the verbiage concerning the PD and moving it back over to City Hall's overview, animal control. Um, there was some excess definitions inside of the ordinance that kind of made it super lengthy. Um, and also changing, we changed the hierarchy for any type of appeal process. Whereas before, it went to the Assistant Chief of Police, the Chief of Police, the mayor, and then to the board, or the council, sorry. Um, now it goes to Danielle, the mayor, and then to you guys after that. Um, the only lengthy portion that was added to it would be on page twenty. Um, we ran into some issues with animals being bred, professional breeding operations inside the city here recently. And I, I don't wanna use the word regulate because that kind of brings on a big brother type sense or feel, but having it regulated actually benefits the city, uh, where that person will have business license of the city. They will be USDA regularly inspected on animal basis, so have a license from the USDA. You're gonna weed out anybody that has any incentive to put a puppy mill in Greenwood or, um, go to the Oaks and decide that they want free dogs in the backyard. You know what I mean? So it, it gives someone an incentive to be an upstanding business and also, um, kind of weeds out the potential for your next-door neighbor having a kennel full of fifteen dollars in the backyard with the intention of breeding them. Um, that's the, that's the essence of what we've changed. Uh, and I'm open to questions if y'all have them.
Do you have any, is there language in the, in that area there on page twenty about not being able to do it in a residential area or...
No, not specifically.
I think we wanna regulate it. We would still like to, if somebody's not doing it in their, in the Oaks subdivision. You know what I'm saying? I don't know how...
There, there is verbiage inside of the ordinance that limits, that has limitations on how many animals you can own. So in order to become a breeder or, or obtain this license, they would have to ask for an exemption. So it would be my decision to say yes or no. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So yes, the, we would have options to...
So we can do it in that location.
Exactly.
Because I think it's about being not so restricted that if it's a possibility or it makes sense, and a house is only, I'm just throwing something out there that's on the end of the street, nobody cares what's around it, right?
Yes, but that goes back to you getting personalized.
Would that not be considered a home-based business?
Yeah, that's what he was saying about helping people get a business permit. Yeah, well, a home-based business in a residential area should go to the planning division, and they have to approve any home-based business.
There you go.
That would be, that would be a dotted checkpoint on there.
Yep.
So just trying, so trying to get people to come in here and say, I'm starting a business of dog breeding is a trick, you know, in a land...
I think, I think a lot of, yeah, absolutely is a trick. And, and so a lot of this is, like a lot of things are, is based on complaints.
Right.
I mean, he, he has so much time, and does he drive the streets of town every day looking forward with this, but, but certainly if somebody calls and he does get them, by the way, I think for raising a dog, because they're barking all night long, and puppies, so it kind of goes back.
So again, this, this is something that's a huge deal, I think. I'm, I'm obviously not a dog person whatsoever. So I just don't, not anybody having a dog grooming or breeding area anywhere near me. So to say all that, I would like to say, I mean, I'd like to see some teeth involved in not complying with coming down there and getting your business license. I don't know what the fines are.
What would happen, Tim, would be somebody would, would apply for a home-based business, and we would contact people like you that live around there, and say, uh, gentlemen or people here want to do a dog breeding business, you know, what do you think about it? They, you know, you get like, they go, you know, I don't want it. And so the planning division would take all that in consideration when they made their decision and say, I'm sorry, there are too many people around there, you're too close. You know, if you were down in this area over here, the houses were real close together. That's different than if you were in Deerwood or somewhere like that. And so they would take all that in consideration to protect somebody like you that doesn't, doesn't work with dogs.
Right.
And you're saying some teeth inside of the ordinance as far as penalties?
Right.
So, um, on page twenty-two, there's a hundred dollar fee for not obtaining that license. Uh, we did recently have an instance where someone was running a breeding operation with twenty-seven animals. Um, the assumption was that they're not wearing any collars or tags. And also, the news based on our records or database is those animals were not registered to the city of Greenwood.
Right.
So they would've had twenty-seven counts of failure, failure to register their animals, twenty-seven counts of not displaying a tag, a registration tag, twenty-seven counts of not displaying or wearing these tags. Uh, so, I mean, it would've been multiple thousands of dollars in fines just for not having collars with tags in addition to a domestic, uh, sales Now, that's, that was for twenty-seven animals. I mean, someone that's just in the backyard, you know, a four-lab or something like that, it's not going to experience near the penalty. But for someone with four labs, four counts of twenty-five, four hundred bucks, you know, could really set somebody back, or potentially set somebody back.
I have a question. I see section eight, uh, section ten, and section thirty-seven.
Yes.
Where it goes through this list of executive assistants, mayor, mayor, city council. Uh, section eight, you still talk a lot about the police department. I don't know if that's all right or not. I, I never like things where we list, uh, titles and things like that, because things change like that over time, and then they get outdated. I would go with the, the mayor's office or the city council, in that order. I mean, everything is under the purview of the mayor's office, right, in the city.
To, to a point.
Mayor can designate however many people he wants eternally, but, you know, if you want to appeal the decision, go to the mayor's office.
Yeah, and the reason he's got that in there, and I'm not, don't pretend it's wrong as it is. Danielle, I, when I brought that position back over here from the PD, it was clear to me that, yes, he's under me, but being under me is not always convenient, because I may not be here or somewhere or whatever. So the next best thing for me was, was my assistant being here to, to be the one who came to. So, but I, but I see what you're saying.
I mean, you know, we all have times like the mayor or the mayor's...
Right.
Desigme, whatever.
Yeah.
I'd rather say mayor or the mayor should assign me.
So that's easy.
Well, that, um...
But I thought section eight's supposed to have all that talk about the police department.
No, that was, that was a mistake. I'll have to correct it in a second here. And the, the last, the last portion of section eight with the executive assistant from the mayor of the city council, that's only for the accused process. Someone that has, like we were talking about with that domestic sales permit, like we just mentioned, if someone has an issue, uh, and I made them mad, and they wanna come, they decide they wanna appeal the decision, basically, they're calling a lawsuit.
Well, that's what TNA is doing as well, right?
Yes, you're right.
And whatever, or...
Yes, you're right.
Do you like the term designate instead of mayor's assistant?
Mayor, what do you mean?
Well, as I'm growing, maybe ten years, I still like scenes.
And if titles change, then you decide in the front, like your deputy, Tom.
Well, and if she's not here literally that day, then there's, then there's a, somebody coming to protest, as you would be, or be, would be Tom. Because add that to his, what
So what are we changing on that?
You're changing the term executive assistant of mayor to mayor and his designate.
And or?
I can't ever say that. Uh, or is...
There, there does. There's interdual. I just wanna be politically correct. No, no, I wanna be...
So, nothing to do with Gaddard.
Just one comment. Uh, did you bring out the part of how many animals that weren't registered? The intention of this was originally, instead of putting them before the court, is give them the opportunity to come in and do it with the city and the, and the animal department. They can come in and register their animals, and that goes away. They can show this, they can pay in transport fees, then it goes away.
Kind of like going to court. You got, you got your insurance on your car.
But since this is such a town that's not the class one or two, therefore it has to go to the district court. So therefore, once it went like a warning ticket, here's what you need to comply. If they don't comply and pay the city their administrative fees, then it can be sent to the court. So it was, it was meant to pretty much self-sustain and self-support the position versus going to, going to the court and letting state have it.
So Mr. Gaddard penned this ordinance, most of this ordinance back in the day, and I appreciate that. So, as, as always, we come back and tweak everything we've ever done. So thank you for your info.
That's very good, but that was the intention, is to self-sustain the position with administrative fees, the transport fees, the pickup fees, these things that could be paid to the city, but it doesn't... be paid to the city, but it doesn't conflict with the Arkansas law because it doesn't have to go before the court unless they're not going to pay the fees, their administrative fees.
Casey, have you met the author of?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I figured you had.
Just in passing, but we haven't ever talked.
Okay, okay. So it's a living document, to say the least.
No doubt.
And as we grow and as we endure new things and, and new ideas.
I wish it wouldn't grow.
I know, well, I think he's trying to make it less growly. I think he's trying to.
Make it less grow.
Yeah, whatever that is. Uh, but I admire and I appreciate the concern and the work that you guys put into this, certainly Mr. Gaddard early on and Casey now, cause if you can't tell, he takes his job seriously and trying to get this thing lined up, so.
I think it's probably, it's gonna cost more than whatever it took to get an animal off the ground.
Sure, sure. I hear we're working on that.
You got forty-sided licenses, so you used to come in, that's.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna talk to you about that in a minute too.
Casey, how are these compared to Fort Smith? Are we similar?
It, that's a good question.
It's all right.
I haven't done any kind of comps like that yet.
Did, did you have the pro-?
Our fees are actually lower than Fort Smith, but Fort Smith is able to have the city court and they get all their money from their options, so they just write a fine right away, which we do not give that. That's, therefore, if you take an administrative fee, the city can collect that money without having to go through the state, only whenever it becomes an issue of a misdemeanor type that they do not comply with the ordinance. You're just trying to get them in compliance, uh, is, is the main goal here. And therefore, the money would come back to the city and not go through the state or the court.
Which, which we still, I use the word struggle, with getting that, being out there writing tickets, I know that's been suggested, suggested, and so we're still not there yet on that and we gotta work on that. They work on that quite a bit to try to get theirs, because there is something to be said, if you don't ever punish them, they just keep on doing what they're doing. So we're working on that, trying to make it right.
In the last breeding operation that we had, uh, a strongly worded letter was plenty of teeth, as you said. I mean, I had that, I had that gentleman in here within a matter of days upon him receiving that letter.
That didn't always happen, but it did then for sure.
It did then.
Like I see on section twenty-four, um, let's make sure there's a clarification there when you move to the mayor, anybody in the city has authority to remove or cause destruction of wildlife. So we'll, we'll need to clarify that.
Twenty-four, page fifteen.
Yes. I mean, when we're talking about water fowl, that's, that's USPO.
Wildlife is gonna be under the authority of the game of fish.
By the way, I like eagles. Anything, anything is.
Can you talk about twenty-four?
It's basically saying the mayor knew what it was a predator and that's not what we want, right?
Right.
You can do what with all cats and dogs you want with that. There's some other, there's some other things that you, we don't, we don't have for us.
Can you tell us about the, can you tell me, uh, again, exactly which portion of that you're referencing?
So this is any animal, fowl or creature, um, we're gonna clarify what kind of fowl we're talking about there.
Okay.
Is any migratory bird or raptor is not an approved of any, of, of, of the city.
Got it.
And then in the last sentence, such animals handle a lot of life. We, we, the city doesn't have control over wildlife there and wildlife.
So we can give the death penalty to a chicken.
Poultry.
That, that was covered in the definitions also as domestic fowl. Except for someone that carries an exotic animal and then tells on what permits they have to get, over the state, the federal government or the county.
You know, page three, that fowl is defined.
Can you describe them, animal you're to? Big one. Sorry, I'm straight. I like the city is covered, the animal control is covered under tracking the wild animals. The tracking or removal, but the euthanasia, I don't, I don't think is a, that's under the special code. No, still under twenty, twenty, section twenty-four, this is tracking the wild animals. So this, this is a question, again, to kick a hornet's nest. I mean, are we issuing tickets to people who are feeding cat collings?
Feeding, I'm sorry.
Cat collings?
Collies.
I mean, that's basically what that just says.
That is kicking the hornets' heads. It's been, that's been sticky subject around Greenwood. Um, and I've, I've been asked several times since I started in May, how we're gonna handle it. Got some ideas, uh.
I got a couple.
I, I think we all do.
Talk to you when we're not being taken.
Yeah. I'm trying, I'm trying to work through those ideas to see what is, what best suits the city. But, yeah, I had some strongly worded conversations with people that I know are feeding feral cats. What I don't like to talk about for, I don't really have any teeth to back me up. Outside, outside the nuisance feeding portion of this.
Yeah.
And I guess what we, what we define as a nuisance animal aside, if the cat's from the neighborhood, uh, we have to do something that would be a nuisance to someone to give the nuisance.
Interesting, people were jumping down the walking trail, a bunch of cats took that on, all of them. That would be a nuisance.
You're right. At the same point, who do I, who, how do I track them?
You know, I, you know, I've tried that. We just need to go over there.
I'm just trying to get the three, my house, my house plan.
I mean, if, if cats have collars, I mean, it's spraying your cushions and trapping in your sandbox and you don't have else, it's a nuisance. Somebody's liable for that animal.
I, I completely agree with you and the, the parts that we're, that I'm trying to work through is how to track down who is responsible for them, who's here.
That's right. So if they're not labeled and they're not being taken care of, so they come in and definitely are feral, at that level, it's the city's responsibility to remove them. Again, they, they can blame them, they can blame them.
They do.
That's right, they've become responsible. That's right, I feed them, they're actually responsible.
Once, once you feed them for so many days, they're considered yours and you would have to register them, therefore they're, they would be a fee or a record.
By the way, there's nothing, and I don't, I don't walk a mile in his shoes, but I get to participate in his shoe, does that sound right? Uh, there's nothing easy about that.
No.
Because they're cats, somebody mentioned herding cats earlier.
Yeah. And I don't know if you guys have ever tried to track a cat before? They're smart. That's the feral cats that are around somewhere. They're smart.
The real question is, you can't do anything with them.
Yeah, what do we do as ones to do? Now, don't answer that, please, that is a rhetorical question.
Yeah.
But that is, that's, that's a problem.
That came on the disposal, on, on the mayor's authority.
You want to go, you want to do?
Maybe that would be.
Maybe walk and pull them in. Maybe let loose someday.
Don't, don't, don't you share ideas or?
With that, sure.
Uh, the first idea was to have a barn cat program, um, because unfortunately the city would have to take every cat that you could get every track and, and have it stranded here, uh, and then hopefully start a list of people who live out in the country, um, that want to have it just send barn cats, just mouse for lunch, um, and then send cats out to the country. Uh, second idea is trap and release, uh, trap and give them spay or neuter and then you're sending them back out, basically just to break the breeding cycle. Those are the two ideas, uh, and I, I think both of them have merit.
You can just send it back out in town?
Like I said, you're breaking the breeding cycle, you're just waiting on that particular cat to pass away.
So where's option three?
That's.
I'll make yourself.
Yeah.
No.
Have you had any interest in the barn cat? Does anybody contact you saying? I haven't even, I, I'll be honest, I haven't put it out there yet. Uh, it's just something that we just kind of can't.
I mean, just, just by catching them and spaying and neutering, you're not doing away with any of the other issues that, that come along with cat collings. Uh, somebody's still gotta feed them, they're still got, um, feline aids, there's still fleas, there's still ticks, I mean, they're still killing millions of migratory birds. I mean, you, you, you're not fixing anything. If you want to deter people not taking care of their pets, then you catch them and you get rid of them. You may, I'm not talking about shooting them, I'm not talking about going off, I'm talking about euthanasia. And, and that is a legitimate option. I mean, people who've had a barn cats, they have, they have cats out there that breed other cats and that keep their own barn cat population going.
Yeah.
We've got urban barn cats.
I like option three.
And it's.
I suppose we're gonna get to, because of this. Maybe you should have brought it. It's, I mean, it's most costly, bacon is the best deterrent for people not taking care of their own animals.
Like I said, I'm not gonna be that guy, folks. Uh, if you guys ask me to, I, I could be that guy, but I also don't want my face in the newspaper with, with those words next to my, next to my.
So you have to be prepared and this, you have to be prepared for the folks to come forward and if you are, that's fine, but, but know that they will come forward because they have before. Uh, they've been to my office, they've been, you know, Casey's talked to them before, they will be back.
Everybody who comes forward gives a free cat.
And I'm not saying, and I'm not saying you don't do it because of that, but you just have to know that that's part of the process. No, you're trying not, you know.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I, I got in trouble, one of the times, one of the times I got in trouble was for taking the cat houses away from the caboose area and throwing them in the trash. Boy, yeah, that didn't, that didn't go well.
I mean, if they want their cats.
Seriously, if they want to protect all the cats, they're welcome to come pick them all up. You know?
Why don't the one person they're gonna be talking to is me? Cause they've got my cell phone and when they're after me, they're, they're ruthless individuals. Cat people are crazy. I'm just saying, they'll, they own, they're crazy too.
You're right. So I feel comfortable, if you guys feel comfortable letting Casey further investigate number three a little bit under his, under what he can find out and what we should do and what we can do, bring it back to us. One and two, and I agree with Mr. Maker, number one, really doesn't, I mean, it does, it does deter the population, but it doesn't take care of any of the other issues. I, I, I have no, uh, I mean, if somebody wants a cat, after we caught it, by means, it's theirs. The mission we have is what do you do in the meantime? And so that, that's a problem.
My idea is, that's my idea is to have a list first. And then we get to say, hey, we, we got, we.
You don't like this one, we'll get you. And so, I mean, and so is there a way to, or can you say just creatures owed and fouls? Or is there something for you to say? Well, the definition there is, if it defines what foul is, that's, that's okay. And that's, yeah.
That's third page where it's, is the definition foul, I think you need to clarify not to include wildlife.
Not to include wildlife, you said? Sorry.
Well, look at it.
Now, I'm saying.
Where, you made this, you need to clarify that it's just strictly domesticated.
Well, then it says duck, then goose, these, these can be.
And those could be domesticated.
They could be. But it says border Californies and so you've got ducks and turkeys, turkeys. Some, all of those are, can be, all those can be wild.
If we put the, if we put the word domestic foul in that section instead of just simply foul, would that?
Yeah. So of all ordinances that our fine city has, this may be one of the most difficult to hit, get it right. Special pieces.
Been that way for twenty years.
And I'm saying, credit Mr. Gaddard for taking it on, making this lengthy. And, and we, yeah, yeah, thanks.
Well, I, I have a reason about that of them.
As we all remember, there's not much that will draw attention more than a animal in the ordinance. I guess I did say animal.
Trying to ban the pit bull from town, looking out of all your time.
I stood over there, I tried, I was a park director then and I wore a blue shirt trying to blend in with the police as if I was one of them, cause that was scary. And another thing, the water, is that?
The two notes I have on here are the, change the hierarchy to mayor or their designated, get that verdict in there and then add the domestic foul to section twenty-four. Do with that.
I would look for all the police words.
Yes. I have that one. I believe that was in section eight as well.
Yep.
There was another one, yeah.
Oh, there is?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Sounds like you got some.
Mr. Bear, I have just about, whenever they changed position over, went back and changed it, which I totally done this.
Derek.
Charles.
I totally have done that, but nobody seemed to be very interested, but I'll be glad to get it.
You've taken the PD language out?
I've taken all that and replaced it.
Okay.
And we could add that other end, instead of him having to do it twice and then he can go over it if you wanted to add.
I think, it sounds good to me, you guys get together.
So we need to put this on clean?
I think so, for the first reading.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Oh, I'll tell you what it is.
Are you gonna read it?
I'll make, I'll go out there. And, and. Motion, right? I'll make, Zach can count off all these letters we're sharing for other orders, that'd be fun to bark off the yard lines.
And I'll say, every once in a while I'll throw in it, that's what I'm talking about.
Uh, I'll make a motion, we hook on ordinance repealing other ordinances by title only for its first, or sixteen seventeen, there it is, replacing ordinance sixteen and seventeen, regulating animals by title only for its first reading.
Right.
I'm gonna be all best of my, everything by yard line. With the changes made.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Last Terry?
Thank you very much. Thanks, sir.
Do you want me to read it or?
The whole thing.
You want?
Oh, you can do that.
An ordinance repealing ordinance of, actually ordinance sixteen dash seventeen and all other ordinances in conflict, they're authorizing, regulating, keeping in control of annual domestic animals, creatures in the city, bringing wild animals on the first. You don't have to read all that, strike out because those have already been repealed, they're actually.
I certainly would have.
Because sixteen seventeen already repealed all those and when you brought it up there, I said those, which could take them out if it's time to try to delete. Part of that.
Mr. Tom, I believe you're up. You're nine?
Oh, you're double seven?
Are you really? Animal control ordinance repealing?
Uh, no, that was taken since...
Finance.
Yeah. So, that's number five.
Yeah.
Like, like, many numbers.
You're number five. Like, what did we say?
Finance is there, but I don't even...
Well, it was wrong.
Oh, I see, we're gonna tell you what, you have no number.
It was wrong, it was supposed to get them.
They get them. Right. So, I talked to, I didn't talk to him, I talked to his dad, kind of, you protect the policy. Anyway, he says he's, his dad said he visited with the mayor, maybe, maybe taking all the colors and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, anyway, odd line exists. He's still a few weeks away from being able to turn in, four weeks away from being able to approve, this is a next year budget, and I would...
So he's not named for turn of eighteen, by any means?
So I think we'll just exclude it, ten thousand dollars is next year's budget, I don't think there should need to amend this year's budget with a reservation.
All right.
Just out of curiosity, while we're talking about it, we have a lot of Eagle Scout projects done around the city. Do I, am I just pissed that we always get money towards them, or...
For a long time, since I was part, when I was part of the city, we budgeted money for Eagle Scout projects.
Like they do labor with their...
Yeah, free labor, we paid for it. Beginning?
The dark ages.
The dark ages. First of all, thank you very much, officially, also.
Yeah, so, there were Eagle Scout projects that were funded in ninety-four.
Oh, sure, yeah, this, I mean, I just knew from my beginning, but yeah, absolutely. I just know, when I came in, when we started to talk about putting it in the books, if you will, to always budget some Eagle Scout projects in the county. And I would like someday for Roger McFow or somebody to help, maybe Mr. Bailey, to somehow gather information on how many, and we can exploit the bridge at the Boys' Girls' Club, because that's just terrible. But all other Eagle Scout projects in the city would be nice to know, and get some, you know, later years, yeah, later years, we recognize and were able to put plaques on, things like that. And I don't suggest we go back and do all of them, but I think there's some, some recognition that needs to happen for all these things.
Except for that bridge.
Except for that bridge.
The city needs to pay for that bridge, they need to...
I'm sorry.
Was that your project?
No. Pity getting ready for it, he said.
Brown pork on that project.
Really? That's the one that's still standing here? That's a picture by, that's a picture by, that could go in a, in a fifty-five forest now.
The bridge, there was a bridge for Seakers Peter.
There you go, because that was Seakers Peter's field at one time. I had that discussion with Mr., uh, what's that guy's name, it's been out there way longer than he should have. No. Kenny Sunday, Kenny's been out there almost twenty years, no, not twenty, and I informed him that that number nine field, Seakers Peter, and he looked at me like, what? And then I also informed him that number eight was Michael McDonald Field, and he really went, what? So I think there's some interest in trying to get some signed, even though number eight has been renamed, Bill Walters Field, because they gave some money for it, did a good job on it.
Seakers Peters Field was also...
Well, that up there, and Bill Park too, so there's a couple Seakers Peters Fields that have not, had kind of gone to the wayside, but nobody putting any signs, so we ought to do something.
I think, well, he's possibly at the actual high school field.
That'd be awesome. I mean, if you don't know Seakers Peters, I don't want to talk to you anymore. I'm just kidding, it's a joke. He was Mr. Baseball, and he was...
I know that story, I'm...
There you go, there's lots of, so, anyway, I just threw that out to say that it's kind of some history that is unfortunately kind of gone to the worst.
Where is he?
Did you?
He wasn't here.
Well, you know what it was before you got to that one? All right, I'll test your, I'll test your skills here, what was it before golf carts? A lawn mower body with no lawn mower motor, and that's what he pushed with the, with the orange car, Coke cream, that's what it stuck, and you push that around town. So, a little bit of trip. I think he still has some shoes over Dr. Burris' office, doesn't he? Dr. Evans' office, any case?
Problem.
I think so. All right, moving on, we have remove table number seven, uh, and number eight, animal control, here we go, Casey, we're getting, you need, you need music?
So you say you need me, birthday, so...
I'm birthday.
I do need me.
It is me, my people dying.
So Danielle and I, when we started looking at our budget, the animal control budget for next year, I mean, noticed that for kennel fees, just for those stray dogs or animals that are, we pick up, we had budgeted twenty-five grand, and that seemed like an absorbent amount of money for basically rental, or dog you would fill, more or less. And right after that, Tom walked in, and I said, Tom, would you rather, if you were, if you were gonna be responsible for an asset, would you rather rent it or own it? And he told me every day of the week, you'd rather own it. So I started looking into just our expenses for the rental facility alone, and the past four years, we've paid eighty-six thousand, which we've changed, just been kennel fees, foot dogs that we picked up. I started tinkering around with fuel mileage, wearing gear on the vehicle, driving out there, total, we're paying about almost nineteen hundred dollars a month on average, and our annual total is twenty-four thousand, plus the twenty-four by, twenty-two five, sorry. We do bring in a small, small amount with the money that people have to pay to pick up their dogs, and typically, annually, we're, or monthly, we're getting about a hundred and twenty-five dollars for people to pay to get their dogs back, and then fifteen hundred a year. So the idea of spending twenty-two thousand dollars a year on a kennel facility, just to rent it whenever we could own our own, and kind of spurred me on to start looking into some numbers. I've done, and Hunter and I, Hunter worked in construction for a long time, we've done basically all the legwork to build our own kennel facility, and right now, I'm at seventy-seven thousand dollars. I've put some cushion on that, so that the final price would likely be under budget, but I've gotten quotes from local guys, I've done everything, all the legwork, like I said, to be sure that my prices are coming in accurately. On the highest side possible, I think that a adequate kennel facility would cost the city around a hundred thousand dollars, and that pushing it to the max, having, having nicer hiring stuff in there.
How many kennels would that be?
Sorry, say...
How many kennels would that be?
Six.
Six?
Yep. The most, the most dogs that I've ever seen in the current facility that we have, they occupy five kennels, and that's in six months. Like I said, the projected price is around seventy-seven thousand dollars, with the expenses that I'm breaking even, with the expense, expenses that I'm projecting, just for us to operate our own kennel, we should break even on our kennel in about four and a half years. And that's including all the costs you rent out there, and then our, my projected expenses included. I don't want to put Tom on the spot, but I did talk to him, and we kind of estimated around a hundred thousand, he said it wouldn't even be worth taking out a loan to do it, just wipe it out right there.
So I hate the question is, where would you put a kennel?
We have two options. Option number, the preferred option is right behind City Hall. Is that an option?
Is it right behind City Hall?
It's talking about on the other side of the property.
Why would that be preferred?
Because it's, proximity is number one. Having, here's what we currently have, somebody has, somebody's dog is loose, I go pick him up, I have to drive seventeen miles round trip to drop him off, that person calls me and they're ready to pick up their dog, like, immediately, I've got to gauge for a twenty-minute round trip to get their dog, bring him back, and then typically, we're meeting them in the front, in the front lobby of City Hall for someone to pick up the dog. If we had a space that was, like I said, enclosed, proximated to City Hall, it would be more, the convenience factor is there for us to go out the back door, have an area where someone can come grab their dog, pay, and then take off.
One thing I, I would have to consider, why you wouldn't want to do that, is if you've ever been around kennels, especially if you're going through another walking trail, it's like a department constantly, and so the amount of complaints...
Where's all the sewage for the kennel?
Yeah, the, the amount of complaints that you're gonna get by barking dogs is, that's, that's probably not a really good place.
Well, that's part of the reason that we didn't want it in any sort of residential area. The second I, the second location was the sewer through the plant, but having folks come drive off to the plant is just not a good idea.
Can you not go out there and pick them up, bring them here?
But I certainly could.
I mean, that's, that's closer to the drought and all the way out, so fours per mountain.
You're right, the idea, and, yeah, these are just options, obviously, chiming in there.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm gonna take it straight up, I'm opposed to putting one right here by City Hall.
Well, let me throw something out, out there that's not even on the books yet, and it's just an idea, the Water Waste Water Commission has been approached with the idea of purchasing property across the road, it's Miles Hills property, okay? So, it's unofficial, we're talking about it, I, I've actually, we're raising on that property, so we know what we're looking at. Well, not in your own square, it's weird, see, people do that all the time. Am I right, people?
Yes.
Behind, behind the books, guys.
Over there.
Over there.
You're pointing at the church crest. Literally pointing at the church crest. Anyway, we know...
We play this game every day.
We know where it is, right? Without anybody pointing, we know where it is. So, it's about seven acres, I think. Why are you looking at me like that?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what's that.
Miles Hills property is over here, somewhere...
The dog needs a room run?
Yes.
Right over there.
I'll walk you outside in just a minute with your finger pointed that way.
The statue right here on the road between...
Yes, and it also goes over to Dan's Street. On the other side of San, San Moody Ham's house, rental house, is not part of the deal. There's no deal made, but there is, there is discussions, I fear enough, John, discussion about that property being purchased, and then the recent, very unofficial, the recycling center moving from its current location over there, behind Close Fence, yada, yada, yada. Now, so there would be more room here for, for expansion for the water sewer department, and for the street to kind of stretch their arms a little bit, and give us more land, as we like to say, because they don't make it anymore. Now, if you put the dog, I mean, that's, now that's residential, you're backing up behind them, so there is that, I would, I would say that, and it's a good point on the walking trail, but if they can't see them, they're not gonna bark at them for the most part, so this is never, not even thought about not having a big property that's around, wherever it is they bark.
Well, I had two kennels in Germany, and they can bark like crazy, if you would believe, we...
Well, they can.
We went one kennel in, it was going six weeks, because the barking was...
I get it, I get, I get.
That was parking range, on the other side of the lake.
Well...
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about...
To shoot them?
No, I'm talking about there.
The kennel.
I drive the, I drive our kennel every day.
Yeah.
With my windows down. Nobody's barking till I get there.
So, so something to consider for sure, but I think the more important thought is, would you, would you consider as pursuing this project, that's instead of relocation now?
Projects are a good thing, but the location's gonna...
No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we'll come back with, with the location.
And the smell, I mean, my brother raised a bird dog for years, and he had a five-eighth kennel, and still, you get that smell no matter what, and it just don't seem professional to me.
Yeah, so location is yet to be determined, so there, with the idea of doing it to have something instead of keep throwing money at, it's kind of like the senior citizen center, we just keep throwing money, and it's never gonna be ours.
Right, our department's kind of small, it's just Casey, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so what happens on the weekends?
Good point.
What happens when you take vacation? And we have a tremendous amount of, I hope you say it forever, we have a tremendous amount of turnover in this department, what happens when you quit? Is Danielle, Danielle wanna do all this?
Danielle's like, Tim Terry, I hate dogs.
The mayor has, I've gone out of that truck, picked up dogs before, and I'll be glad to do, and I don't want to do it every day.
The building inspector did it for quite a while, not that suggests he does it again, but in a callback, he did it before.
So there's a little bit of a plan to, to cover that situation.
There are volunteer opportunities, whether it be residents or high school clubs, it's something that other communities do often, there's also the potential of asking employees across the board to just volunteer for a Saturday or Sunday. Or you know, showing up and keeping water, filling up the water, just, these dogs are better open kennel than they are, or you call them.
I did, I mean, I don't remember all the, maybe Greg, maybe you remember, when the dog kennel was out there by the sewer.
Like there was...
It was up by the water treatment plant many years ago. It was out there behind the sewer plant, and it seemed to me like there were a lot of pitfalls.
Well, you can't have people going in there, in and out.
You can't, but you, back when it was ponds, it was okay, but now, they don't like people coming in and out like that.
So...
What were all the, I mean, what were all the problems that we had? I thought it, the way I remember it was a disaster, to have a dog kennel.
They put the water distribution, since they were already getting called out all the time, and they were considered a dog catcher too, that's just putting more on the guys that are already overworked, and they were having to go do everything, and then, then finally, at the very end, they started deciding to pay people to help them go and take care of the dogs, euthanize them, everybody started helping out then, but it was just such a mess out there, and there's a lot of houses near there, and they, you know, as many houses as you say there are, there's Farley and, uh, Green Hill Circle around there, a ton of people there.
Because at one time, those guys actually, the street department actually went out and cleared off, if you, if you come up Jayhawk Delane, I wasn't saying this, come up Jayhawk Delane, before you turn left to come on up to the, the back of the sewer plant, and now the, also the solar panel, or solar field array out there, we were, you could just drive straight into those woods, and there's actually a clearing, not for you deer hunters, but there's a clearing out there of about a quarter of an acre, that they went in there and kind of mowed that down to build that in there, it never, never came to fruition. One, we kind of just let it go, and two, again, backed up to those houses, to those apartments, so. Anyway, now, we're talking about location again.
I mean, I think what I, you know, what I guess I remember about it, probably what Rod referred to some, and, you know, it's the sins of the past, I guess, it seemed like it was all for the game, you know, I mean, we didn't, we weren't very good at managing, frankly, I mean, we had, you know, either it was whoever was working there, or we couldn't keep somebody working there.
I think you're referring to a little bit about the one by the cemetery too, building the Pacific County facility.
Well, wasn't that one, it was ran by the, uh...
Housewives.
Did we ever, we didn't run that?
We, we not be, but I think the city got the ball.
We stayed because we went on the truck.
Yeah.
You know, we, we paved a few lanes.
But that one's back, it kind of went south.
Yeah, but I mean, I just don't, those are different times, but you had Matt Cochran under the water plant and feeding the dogs, the dog mayor, and everything, I was doing it, you know, it was kind of a bad deal.
So he didn't, he didn't go into this, I'm speaking for him, sorry, we, we didn't go into, he didn't go into thinking, we understand, he gets off at five o'clock in the afternoon, if that's what his time is or whatever, somebody's gotta go check on the dogs before you go along, and that may be a four thirty job for him, or me, or whoever, to go out and go one more time, one more time before nightfall, if these things got water, and so, and there's automatic feeders, there are automatic waters, nobody has to babysit.
My concern, having said all that, is that this fifty-six hundred dollars in annual expense... expense is gonna end up being twenty-five thousand dollars in annual expense a couple of years down the road, because, you know, nobody's gotta do this, and we gotta pay that guy, and, you know, we, whatever happens, I mean, that's.
So.
Yeah, Bob, I don't know what the, what your expenses are, you know.
I took a chance to look at my numbers, but I'm pretty budget oriented. What I, what I gave you all is a killer breakdown of any type of expenses you're gonna see. The, the building costs alone is almost two of the record in order. I, I will admit that my monthly, maybe my projected monthly expenses are slightly abbreviated, but I've got a pretty good hold, I've got a pretty good pulse on what you're probably just gonna need to operate a dog kennel on a monthly basis.
I think you're heading in the right direction, Liz, I'd say my biggest deal is location.
That's fine. Well, I mean, I just want y'all's blessing to pursue it.
Well, my biggest deal is having anything over about a two star a minute beginning this thing.
Sorry.
I don't want, I'll go out at all with this.
And I'm right there with you.
I mean, make sure they're getting span and water, and make sure that the pup and pee gets out somehow.
Yep.
But, I mean.
It's pretty.
No pillows, no blankets?
No.
I mean.
Right like pillow.
Concrete floors, and a box slapped on top of them, so.
Because here's the whole deal.
Yep.
And everybody thinks I'm some kind of devil guy.
Mm-hmm.
But actual legitimate pet owner will come find their stupid dog if he's missing. So he shouldn't be there very long. Well, they're on vacation for two weeks, well, they should phone somebody.
Yeah, I mean, this is not a dog daycare.
Right.
Miami's.
That's why we don't need the Hilton out here for dogs, because they shouldn't be there very long.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah, so, well, they come find me down here, I live at six thirty-five, I don't make it to my house, and tell me about how big a jerk I am. But I'm just saying, that's the whole reason is, it's stray, it's here, we got a stray dog, somebody's gonna look for it, after about seven days, it goes away, and nobody will care, because nobody's coming to get it, obviously.
I think they're, they're dogs, they can sleep on our, they can sleep on our floor. My concern is though, is that once it's under the city's purview, all of a sudden it gets more eyes on it, that they just want to be involved with it, wanna check on it and stuff like that. Whereas when it's, you know, out, out, out of town, out of sight, you know, there's not that much interest in it. But I think that all of a sudden becomes under the city's domain, and all of a sudden we're gonna get lots of people all of a sudden interested in it, whether it be cat lovers or. Are there any kind of certifications or permits or anything to operate a kennel like that? Not that I've, not that I've seen yet. Like I said, I'm still in the entry level, entry, entry level basis of this, just trying to see if it's even worth my pursuit here.
I would like for us to ultra think through what Tim's referred to, how this thing gets operated. If we got ten dogs, nobody's coming claiming them, what are we gonna do with the dog?
He thinks does that matter?
Yeah. That's, that's my responsibility as it has to stand right now.
The only difference now is it's in somebody else's facility.
Yeah.
What happens now if nobody claims the dog?
Uh, I haven't ran into that yet. Right now's the first time, I guess I have ran into it. Right now's the first time I've ran into that issue. I've got a pack of three wild dogs in there right now. I'm trying to find some rescues or some transport services that are willing to take them to the northern states, for the Midwest.
Now, Daniel, your first term, was the last time I was here, this, we were in this deal, and it was costing us fifty thousand dollars a year, and we were in trouble, and the news was hovering around us because of the way things were being run. And we got out of this, and we hadn't got to that point yet, and we were happy to get out of this arrangement.
I mean, you're talking about the crazy cat people, seriously.
Yeah.
When you're running the kennel, they're all gonna be in this room.
I am running the kennel because I'm still responsible for getting those dogs adopted or back to their.
You know what I'm saying? When you own the kennel and own and operate it, and if you put it right here behind this building.
I, I will also say, and I'm not trying to, to blow or to mount a horn, but my twenty twenty-one is the, it's the bottom of the barrel, it's the lowest of that kennel fee, those kennel fees have been. Just because I'm diligent, I'm trying to get them adopted as fast as possible, I don't want, I don't want the city to be on the hook for senseless rental fees.
Casey works as hard as anybody we've had, and we've had, we've had a couple of good animal control officers in my, that I've seen, but he works as hard as anybody, if not more, to get these things, these animals adopted, or find the right owner, and that's just a fact. And I think it's clear, I think everybody's made it clear, if you didn't write it down, do not put it.
Go put it down there. We got it.
I don't care. Well, on the other side of the credit, Rod, so you.
But I, I did agree with, with what Rod said though, I mean, when, when it was under higher authority, you know, all of a sudden it was a big ordeal, and we were in there with lots of people scrutinizing it and comment, and it, it just became a form of a hassle that we were kind of planning to, you know.
Because they're gonna wanna keep up with where their dogs are at about two weeks later, because they know the fact that Terry got there, he runs by the, kill him. They won't know that's not happened. So I, to your point, I mean, yeah, there's, there would be more eyes on it if it's an official city entity than the postal, they have no clue or watch for them.
Yeah.
We've had a lot less trouble in the last seventeen years.
I guess the.
We did seventeen years ago.
Well, we got our target, the whole idea is that we don't keep throwing money at something.
Yeah.
That's the thing.
Do we want to net seventeen thousand dollars a year in animal control budget?
I say, seventeen years ago, we were doing, it cost us fifty thousand, so seventeen thousand, so it's a bargain.
And we were gonna need to spend more to straighten it out.
But, I mean, I guess a penny saved is still a penny earned. That's kind of my mentality.
We might check on two oh six Bell Road.
I wish they got us to finish any of those.
We could put it with the new Senior Citizen Center, and they come in and they leave with a dog.
Oh, companion.
Right, there you go.
Whatever.
When they do the food deliveries, they just load them up with a dog and a cat, and they just hand them a plate, and there's a cat.
They can play on the splash plate.
Nervous, it's a dog.
Okay, but we say on air, they should make it more than a cat.
All right. Thank you, Casey, I think. Are you done? I mean, I'm not trying to rush you. I think, I think you have some homework to do. Get, get a little better, I think, I think I'm hearing you like the idea of it, location, 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 as they say.
I hate the idea, but I like it.
Okay.
Look, I'm fine with that, Dave, I'm just saying be cautious.
So, so you want to vote to give him some blessing to go forward and bring you back to your location?
Sure.
You got, you got, you've got as good a number as you're gonna get. I mean, that's, that's pretty darn.
No, I, I think, I think just let's get a little better job on the location, then come back.
That's what I'm saying, okay, and then vote, sorry.
Has Tom seen all these numbers?
Yes.
Just.
Haven't you? Oh, I thought you had.
Let's just, let's just work on the location and.
But the numbers are right.
That's, that's my fault.
I'm not opposed to.
I need to see it for you.
Back here.
Well, I, I'd want to also too, if, if you guarantee staying here from now on.
You can just get a side contract, five more years.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, sir. Good job. Uh, case number nine, rezone. Pointing.
Sir, council, come here. Before I bring this up, I just wanted to bring, tell you guys that phase one of the sewer plant, we come online sometime this week, and then we will start bidding out and, or they will start bidding out the construction and the design on the second phase, which will be on, down by the dam, behind the new water plant, but phase one should come on sometime this week.
Next one's in Southwest, is it?
No, that's, that's all bound. Well, that's one behind the sewer plant, and it's, it, we'll go.
Swepco were here the other day.
Right, because I've got it in the county.
Couldn't have it together.
It did, but it didn't work out. We, we came back to you on this. We already told you.
Yes. We're people.
I never heard of it.
Yeah, definitely, we did. The good news is we didn't have any land.
We did.
I like ten acres or whatever it was.
So we got four ones that we had to have, and now we want to put a dog kennel in there because it's behind the apartments. So Swep, Swep, the Swep.
No, we were talking about the.
We did, I mean, yeah, that's, yeah. Swepco Array, is as he said, down at the dam.
Literally, it's almost, if you're going down there to fish, instead of turning left to go fish, you go straight. Off to the right.
It's basically down.
It's down from.
John will have a good example.
The water plant, that road, those guys take.
All the way down the bottom, instead of, if you're at the dam, you turn to your right and it'll be.
Right there by the dog kennel.
Yeah, sure. Yes. A little bit.
Uh, what I've got here is a.
And let me, real quick, so we want to do a ribbon cutting, not necessarily when they flip the switch, but we definitely want to do a ribbon cutting with Chamber and all of you guys out there, because this is a big deal, I know it's taking forever, but we're getting it done, we'll do a ribbon cutting in Artsaw Valley, Array, and then we'll do another one for Swepco, this time really, we'll get your schedule in the morning, everybody out there with your bright shining faces.
The pipe and that seems to take forever, but this is pretty quick.
It is, that's true. This is true, and I do go on that too. Go ahead.
All right, this is, I'm coming to you tonight for a rezone from R1 to R5 for a block of property, it's block number one, off of Bell Road, it's surrounded by Nashville to the north, excuse me, Knoxville, Bell Road, Joplin, and Fern. This is, we want to rezone it to an R5 for the purpose of destruction of some cottage homes. These homes are slated to be two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. The reason why we want to go to R5 is because there will be ten lots, they're the size of a lot, very, eight foot, seventy foot, and we've got two center lots that are sixty foot wide, and R5 will allow those to be built in there with the smaller side yard setbacks.
Is this made possible by extending sewer of Bell Road?
Yes, exactly. The reason why it's there. And, and I did put an emergency pause on there because they are working on the sewer on this property now, and with the, if we get this approved, then the developer can go ahead and get started on, on the sewer without re digging a lot of property out of all that, that's for the emergency pause.
Well, this may be our subdivision regulations.
Exactly.
And do they have sidewalks?
Yes.
Sidewalk. It's so compressed in there, there's no green space, so they'll do a payment for lieu.
Yes.
I'm sure we could squeeze a little water in there somewhere. I, I like that idea of the garden, Sonny, but where do the cars go?
The cars, they, they, uh, garage.
Okay. So there's no place for them to park on the street, or we're gonna.
No, 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 the streets are narrow, narrow, narrow. And, you know, that's, that is one reason why there, there will have to be sidewalks there.
I sit my brother on full of this.
And, you know, we, a lot of people, we have talked about the pathway, you know, we didn't put a sidewalk here, there wasn't, there wasn't any other sidewalks in the neighborhood. This is changing. Everything that, and we've got about three or four projects that people are coming to us because of the sewer line extension down there, those will start having sidewalks on all the amenities of, of your minor subdivisions.
And, what about, you know, it, almost everything is covered, how are the water run off? I mean, there's no detention area because it's too small. How are they dealing with redevelopment water runoff?
Uh, we haven't seen a water study on that yet, we will, Rixie is doing this, and so he normally brings that into us with the construction plan.
So, Sonny, and I'm all for the high density garden homes, and I, I think I'll maybe move in the one myself at some point, I'm tired of all of it. But, you know, we've got traffic problems right here, and I can just imagine the traffic being backed up all the way back to the post office, before anybody knows, hey, we should've seen that coming. How are we, what is the trigger for traffic? How do we know we're pumping to meaning? Is this the only thing gonna go on down there for the next few years?
Hmm, I doubt it, Rod recalls the Vienna, probably the sewer extension.
That sewer extension is gonna promote a lot of growth down there.
This is, this is a sample of what they're going to build.
Nice, I like it.
Yeah, very nice.
So, what are we doing with all the cars?
Well, like I said, you've got your garage, and then, then, you know.
Do you have Bell Road, any of the, like, collector Bell Road, or is it gonna stay? I don't think old, ten cars are gonna leave at the same time every day out of those homes.
Yeah, I'm not talking about whether those tens will cut the next one and the next one.
Same thing you do everywhere else, and just, I don't know.
Well, I mean, eventually, it's like in front of Tim's.
Here's what I'll do. I picture you just show head drive. Yeah, but there's no school, I'm not going to school.
Well, Bell Road is basically.
They're not back there, they're going to school.
You know, it, uh, it, these will be local streets that, that will go into Bell Road or they will go over to Daisy.
Probably meet the standards of the Flacher Street.
Probably not, but close.
Why, because of the width?
Yeah, you know, Daisy would be more of a, close to the standards of the Electric Creek, Nashville, those streets would be, but.
The thing about that, that one right there is you're, you're not having to come down Bell Road, you go.
Yeah.
Real quick to Daisy.
But, you know.
To me, that's a better out anyway, at Nashville and downtown. I mean, there's about ten different directions for them to go.
You know, Fern, Fern probably doesn't meet the standards of a, a local.
Where?
Fern. Running towards the south, it's probably about size of most people's double garage.
Let's talk about Chicago, anybody want to talk about Chicago's?
Yeah, I mean, that's another.
Don't talk about it. I mean, I think that's what we're trying to do, is, is prevent that from happening. We want to make sure that we have the ability to.
They've got all these, they've got all these avenues out, they're not stuck on Bell Road.
Well, I can tell you this, I, I don't believe, I guess I have a problem, I don't know why we're even looking at this if there hadn't been a water state done yet, because it may not even be able to function if the water doesn't blow out or drain properly. I mean, if we're looking at this, but the lot ten and lot five, I absolutely cannot stand cramming that junk in the middle. It's gonna turn into this catastrophe we had over here on Olmer and Alex, where we put a yard right in the middle of somebody else's yard, put a fence right in the middle of somebody else's fence, and tuck it in on the corner, it looks ridiculously stupid. It's the same deal, over on Olmer and Alex.
Oh.
Yeah, we got a house in the corner of somebody's yard, the privacy fence puts up to their Yeah, we got a house in the corner of somebody's yard, the privacy fence puts up to their house about, probably eight feet away, it looks like, from the existing moment it was there.
That was only, uh, that was instead of a seven and a half foot side yard, that's a seven foot side yard.
Right, well, that's six inches. Definitely looks odd and putting a house in there probably shouldn't be.
But that's, that's the design of the, the cottage homes is zero lots, zero lot.
So what Buddy Lloyd is doing up on
Old Hackett.
Ragged Road is exactly the same thing.
Yeah, I couldn't stand the two he has in the middle of it. I hadn't seen that block from the plan that he says.
Well, he's built one and he's built, he's, or the old first one, now he's built one and then he's built two more pads and they have that zero lot around.
We've got.
You know that's on. Old Hackett Road and, and, uh.
Beach.
What is it?
Beach.
Beach. Right across from, oh, no, not Old Hackett, but Rock McKenny, that little side street.
So there's eight houses with two tucked in the middle in between the lot business where they have backyard.
Not yet, but he, he's continuing to build. He's got this wide or a triangle lot that he's built. I don't know how many it was approved for, Sonny, back in the day. I'm talking about Buddy.
Yeah, I, I'd have to.
If they're. Or they will be.
Right. I just, in the old days, kids about playing in the backyard. It's fun.
Right, and, and so.
Well, families, it doesn't matter, it's rent because I wouldn't want that on board.
No, there are people that want those. Brock had all those ones.
Yeah, I got to tell these kids they're all broke.
No, you know, that's what I'm saying. You gotta, you gotta have something for everybody.
They tell us out here, they, there's, uh, uh, these are the camper crossings, uh, some faring, a little area like that, uh, that, uh, they.
And so I guess what's, uh, Tim's, I guess, third question, I mean, I just think, you know, between the homes, just a, if there's gonna be a fence, it's just gonna be one common fence. It's not gonna have like two fences and there's gonna be like this foot in between them. That's gonna, not everybody gets maintained.
There's one common fence, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll say this, y'all know what I think about emergency pauses.
This does help the developer out and.
The developer that's on our planning commission, which I don't think looks very good, just pass it to the emergency. That's my opinion.
It's like that, it's because of the construction that's going on there right now and, and, uh, it does make sense to, uh,
Might need you on with the.
With the, uh, construction as it's going. Well, that will, the water study will come in, AC, with the construction plan. All we're talking about tonight is rezoning. We're not talking about construction. You know, I showed you the pictures of that, just, just to let you know what it's doing, but, but we, the construction plans, water studies and things like that hasn't been presented yet. That will come in front of the, the planning commission and they will look at it and they will, uh, rule on, on whether or not the water study is correct.
Tell you those, are those just single story?
Yes.
What picture you showed us were cottage homes?
Yes.
It has some square footage, isn't it?
Well, because of the, the square footage and the zero lot lines for the smaller lot.
And that's what Buddy calls it, I think.
Yeah.
When you say square footage, I mean, is it bigger or smaller?
Smaller.
It is two hundred and fifty thousand.
They've become maybe over two hundred thousand dollars.
Or smaller.
They're gonna be, you know, uh, probably in the two thousand square foot, uh, size. They're gonna be a high size home.
Oh, I thought they were smaller than that.
That was a cardboard box.
It's like saying, the, the traction is like saying, no yard.
Yeah. That's the start, Billy. You know, you see that, that there's no yards here.
So that's a pretty.
This is going to continue to happen. We need to have a conversation on what to do with the roads because these are some terrible little roads. And.
You don't like the seven way stop sign?
Well, you know, look at Fern. Fern doesn't even beat the standards for a local road. These are things that we need to address.
They're wide enough for a couple of sixties of a bus station to go up them.
You know, I, I think we need to do something like Fort Smith where we partner on fixing some of this stuff, not waiting for a gigantic mess before we do. Let's fix it all along as it's growing. So, I don't know how.
We don't have a big plan that shows what needs to be collector. All of that, but we have that.
We do, and we have a number for you if you want to fix all the streets and it's thirty-three million dollars.
I'd just say fix the streets that we're, we're fixing to have an immediate impact. And when you grow, it's impact.
So you want to stop.
We don't want to Chicago.
Like you're saying, we don't want Chicago.
No, I'd say we do it all at the same time, like Fort Smith does. So you've got ten houses, that's gonna put twenty cars on these streets. And you say there's multiple ways out, that's fine, so we don't have to worry about them backed up here in front of the city hall. But we need to fix Fern at the same time that they're doing construction.
Or you want to do it actually, or do you want to build a road when you're driving up through?
Well, this is, hopefully it's not a, you know, a terrible job like we've had before. I mean, these are done to a standard that can handle that truck.
The road, I wouldn't hope.
I know not in current condition. But they need, they're gonna need to be fixed and if this thing is going to be replicated right across the street and right across that, we're going to end up in a mess.
Well, I don't know if we're fixing the road. I don't, I don't want to do that.
Well, I, I guess when you say the firm, yeah, I mean, I saw it's a fifty foot right of way. Or really from, uh, I'm just thinking, you know, to have a, if we weren't wanting to, uh, go down and curb and gather that, uh, street, I mean, how much really do we need for a, you know, this residential street? Something like, more like sixty.
Chad's out here to speak on this. He'd be the man to go through. Chad.
So what is, what is the width of the local road?
That calls is what?
Uh, Rod, I'd have to look at normally, like I said, it's a good.
What's the width of a collector?
It was.
I think they're sixty. But I would have to look at myself.
Okay. So if enough of this is gonna go on, we may have cut very Bell Road to collector. And if we know this, we need to make sure we're getting easements and right of way and.
Bell Road may need to be a collector whether this goes on or not.
Well, I don't think you know it until a, a new developer comes and says, hey, I want to build ten more of these.
There's already been a bunch of new houses built up in that area. There's already been a bunch of new houses built up in that area.
And I think that's.
Oh, between Fern and Evergreen.
He hasn't inspected any.
Between Fern and Evergreen, they want here.
What are you calling it? Yeah, well, it's.
That's, uh, here's his property there, they're looking at doing some.
No, he's, that's Fern. He's, he's alone up there. He's redoing that out.
Where?
For his cousin or his brother-in-law.
Where?
Frank Bird. It's not a major, but he's close.
He's married.
Might as well be.
So he ha, he has discussed.
Evergreen.
Their own Bell Road. Putting lots along Bell Road.
Wait him.
He has, he has put lots along Bell. Bell, yeah, Bell, I thought he meant.
I think it's up from. Yeah, I mean, I've seen.
They're running.
Well, you got Lincoln.
It's over. What do you mean? I don't know, they want to get around like it. Right, right, sorry.
Well, I, I kind of just, uh, think that, I mean, no matter when we're gonna build, I mean, if it's ten years from now, I think we should have adequate right of way, you know, uh, in between, you know, the, the, the lot on the other side of this, you know, here and say, do we need to, you know, have more right of way? You know, or is fifty foot right of way going to be sufficient to have a, a curved, curved street and, and, uh, gutter?
They're showing fifty feet, but they're showing the water line within the fifty feet of the sewer, within that fifty feet. Is that enough?
Well, that's, I'm under two.
You might want to halt, if you want to widen that and, and move the sewer lines just now going in, it might be a good time.
I'm, that's what I, I'm just trying to make sure we're doing proper planning, because I'm never sure that we're actually doing proper planning. We kind of seem to be reactive to masses.
Well, if you, if the plan is, if, and I'm with you on this, don't, don't, I'm not against you, but if the plan is to someday, soon, there would be more homes up there, and that's probably a good assumption. We found out if you lay a sewer line or water line, they won't show up.
They will show up.
So that's probably a good, we're a little bit behind it now because that line's going in, literally, as we speak.
Where is that line going to?
To Waylon Parker in front of his house, wherever they do. Nashville or something. Lincoln, Knoxville, or whatever.
Is that Knoxville?
Knoxville.
So there's Greg, I'll tell you about fifty feet or whatever.
Greg, where's he going? Third line?
He's going, stopping right at Lincoln.
Lincoln.
It's a, it's a collector. Where he's putting a collector line in there if anything else fills it.
I'm begging them to go on up if they haven't decided to do that. I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna be here, we'll call him up. Sir? No, I do not, so let's put sir or. I'm begging them to go up there. Water, West Water was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Oh, lucky.
Yeah, the hundred and forty thousand is the additional city sales and use tax that they're gonna receive over last year, over this year as well. It's one, one month worth of.
Well, I'm not continuing that.
But I, I think in some ways, just trying to get right of way from, uh, one developer as opposed to four homes, you know, later down the road, which we do need to, you know, get, uh, I mean, increase right of way. It must be easier to do it now as, uh, we're doing just one person as opposed to, you know, uh, four, four on Knoxville's side or three on Fern's side. I think that is just something to, to consider. Or to me, we're gonna have like a Chicago street. I think nobody likes a Chicago street.
It's narrower than the trail. So the rezoning request before you is a rezoning request. You, you then get to decide if you want to work on the road and I, I'm all with you. Well, do you want, do you want, what's your thoughts on rezoning?
I think if we do this rezoning, we need to have traffic stuff on this little section of town that we've improved now. So we know what we're in, what we're in store for and that we need to start planning for it. And that may mean that we need to co-op with these guys that we're, you know, doing these high density developments, but we're co-op with them to improve the streets.
Let me just ask you a question, because again, I keep bringing Buddy Lloyd. Buddy Lloyd's doing the exact same thing up on Sheriff. What'd you call it?
That should be a collector's street.
So why didn't we have this discussion about that?
We need.
Because that is an old and narrow roads. I, I dodge kids up there every single day.
So, so are two wrongs make a right?
No, I'm asking you, I'm asking you what prompts this one different than that one.
That's it.
I think we're just fine if we just do this one, but I think there's more coming.
Well, I, I hope there is.
I think there's a whole citywide comprehensive, if that's the right word, plan about collector streets. I was driving around the other day thinking that to myself. Bell Road, uh, whatever that is.
Old Hackett.
Old Hackett. You know, when you think about school traffic after football games, all those kind of things, uh, that road, uh, coming off Main Street that turns into Jones Street.
Houston?
Houston turns into Jones. You know, a lot of people go out of school and get on that and go, it's over there, come back down Denver and that kind of deal. I mean, where could we make roads into collector streets?
So how about this?
Which is a whole bigger discussion.
Right, it's huge. So how about the thought of, as you consider rezoning an area, you add to that a plan of action for what you're talking about, of, of investigating into a, the collector street or whatever it takes.
And we should pay a large chunk of that, but they should pay some too.
Nope.
They, the developer?
Right, just enough for their area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see.
How many houses? I think we need to do. Pardon me.
How many homes does it take to make it a subdivision?
A minor subdivision?
Or whatever this is.
Uh, a minor, this, this would be considered a minor subdivision.
How, how quickly can we get a civil engineer to take a look at it and give us a plan?
I don't know.
Pardon?
How, how quick can we get a civil engineer to look at this particular area for what they're asking for?
I'm not talking about this in between the blocks, but the kind of the whole thing that we've improved with sewer and water. I can just add, Rod, uh, you know, uh, Jeremy Shores and Rod and Rixie, how, how well done. It seemed like we just backed up.
Problem is, is the, 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 the promptness of it is a question because there.
Yeah, I, I was smiling when he said how quick. I'll be very quick. I like that one thing. We're gonna get a sewer ball done, then we'll get a sewer master plan that I can work in with this. Because the last thing you want to do is redo the roads and we come in and put a sewer later in and dig through it. So we like to work, we put the sewer in and the road comes in after us.
Well, that's exactly what I'm trying to prevent.
So I don't, I'll throw another one out there for you just for kids. Ten, Highway ten is gonna be widened five lanes going on seventy-one. Needs exactly, now that's a highway. But the sewer line, we don't want to be building, we don't want to put a five lane highway and then come back and try to put sewer lines.
But, you know, seriously, I, I mean, I, I commented earlier and I'm not trying to make a joke about it. We, years ago, probably prior to you being the mayor, I don't know, when it, there was this master street plan, right? You know, of, this should be a collector and this should be this, that's that and all that. What, where is that? I mean, I, I'd like to see a big map of that hang on the wall.
And that changes because sewer was not available until this week.
If we saw it, it's pretty complex. Because it, somebody, it looked like somebody took a crayon and they, well, they got accessory points, uh, coming across fields and over through, uh, Ware Road and connecting with Ink Mountain and come together.
But did that master plan, and, and that's what I'm getting at, is that needs to be updated to John's point. That needs to be updated in coordination with sewer and water. Does that require an engineer to go and do all this work? Is that a two-year project?
They can, you know, the boy was talking about, you, I think.
I think it's a combination of, uh, your different departments getting together and looking at, uh, uh, looking at the streets and the possibility of, of future, you know, growth. It's, it's kind of like the bypass, for example, or the traffic relief. Uh, when you, when you go down to the Arkansas Highway Department and they say, look here, here's all your plans for your bypass. You know, ever, ever four years, somebody came down with a new idea for a bypass. Now you've got one that's gonna work. Well, the master street plan, from what I can see, is they, they never found one that would work.
But, you, you know, you've got the road extending main over there. You've got Tim driving all the time about cars in front of his house. Um, you know, it seems to me like that's something that needs to be alive, active discussion all the time.
All the time.
Planning, you know.
Because nobody thought about, dreamed about putting new, these things on Bell until they decided to serve.
Yeah.
And, and two, they've got the action. When somebody says this road that should be extended from Denver Street to Highway ninety-six, and everybody said, well, that's what we need to do, then it needs to be done. But it doesn't. It, it ends up on, on a computer sheet somewhere that the next four years, somebody will draw a line going the other way, you know, right through the middle of, of, uh, uh, Kelly's Farm over there.
And, you know, and I'm not trying to be critical, but our street department report that we got today, so we did routine maintenance and whatever. Okay, good. You know, I think what we really need to be looking at in those reports is, these are the things we're working on. These are the plans. And I know we got this gigantic thirty million dollar unreal. Well, that's not gonna work, obviously, but, you know, what.
The beginning of that, that thing though, that he's, that we've referred to that for thirty-two million dollars is what provided that information. It's a good tool that Chad and I have yet to get together on, to be honest with you. He's been, he's been here for now a while, but we've got to sit down and talk and then bring it back to you guys, and Chad and I, and I've been, I did it with two other street directors, you know, we've gone through three in the last few years, but to, to go around and look and see, uh, at these roads and say, okay, this one needs to be wider, this is ridiculous that it's not, and then let's come back and formulate a plan to do this that. But, but.
Right, if you could get this network of collector street working, it would theoretically relieve traffic on the.
It'll help, but the unknown is where somebody all of a sudden is gonna decide, that's the place I want to build. I, I would have thought five years ago Buddy Lloyd was kind of losing his mind to go up on the Taggart Road and build these things, but he's selling them as he's building them now.
Twenty years ago, Lanny Mo was on this channel, sitting here, and he lived out there at Indian Hills. And he was fighting tooth and nail to put Fox Colbert's and widened Denver Street. Twenty years ago. It looks exactly like it did then. And they, and Reagan's built all those houses out there, you know? And that ought to be a collector's street getting cars out of towns at seventy-one highway. You know, that could be a center street type of road.
Well, you know, well, that in Houston is probably the.
Webster's Terry.
Most, uh, traveled roads that in this part of, of the city and it's one of the most narrow roads. part of, of the city, and it's one of the most narrow roads. I'll say it's a right way.
Well, let's get back to these ten lots up here wanting rezoned. Um, I mean, is it, the reason I'm asking about the subdivision deal is we'll have to put some curb and gutter, at least on the side of the roads that's on the houses side.
Well, they, they're responsible for the sidewalks and the, uh, the, uh.
I mean, like out there on Chisholmville, the side that's on Lake views curb and gutter, the developer was required to curb and gutter that side.
That's a major subdivision.
Right.
This is a minor subdivision.
Is that somewhere in our subdivision regulations that they refer to a minor subdivision?
I'll look that up. When you, when you, when you're not putting in roads and infrastructure, right?
Well, that Chisholm Road was already there too, but he had to curb and gutter that because it was part of the subdivision regulation.
That was that whole subdivision there.
Yeah, so that's a major subdivision. A minor subdivision don't need to curb it. Also, the rezoning, R one to R five, what's the R five for? You get two middle houses in the middle, asks us everything.
The R five allows for the, uh, for the zero line lines, or the narrower setbacks on the sides, right? Now, theoretically, they could go through there one on at a time and ask for a variance and, and get a variance like that, but R five allows to look at the whole, uh, uh, project together and then approve it as a project.
And so the R five, going from R one to R five, basically allows them, instead of having eight lots there, to put ten lots.
Yes.
So pick up an extra two lots. And I, I, that's my only concern is, is that, you know, in doing this and saying, you know, 'cause I'm all for the college is there, but I think it's gonna bring, raise property values up, you know, in that whole area there, is that, that we do have the proper right of ways, uh, you know, on, on Fern and on, on Knoxville, you know, so that it's much easier dealing with, like I said, one person as opposed to, you know, six people.
And you'll see by the survey, that's fifty foot, fifty foot, uh, on Fern, fifty foot on Bell.
And fifty foot on John, it looks like, or Chisholm, on Knoxville. Is that fifty foot of Knoxville? Yeah, fifty foot.
Do you refer to Fort Smith Home, similar to this? Like, where, where does that, would that be?
Uh, in Chappy, and then also in Barling. They have the cottage open like this over there. And you'll notice on these, on these lots, the corner lots are, are oversized lots. I mean, they're eight foot, just like that.
Buddy, guys, I was wondering, the, the streets there in Chappy Crossing, you know, how, what is, what is their width there?
They're, you know, of course, those are all branded roads and all that, so they're, you know, they, they've got the advantage of it there.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with new construction in old neighborhoods compared to new construction in old neighborhoods.
So, the water lines on the east side of Bell and the new sewer lines on the west side, is that right?
I don't know where the water, is that right, Chris?
Yes.
Sewer definitely on the west side, yeah.
Right, it's west.
Is that right, Chris?
Yep. And sewers is going, running down those two streets that they're gonna put in. They're gonna run down with water, but you just have ten foot separation as long as they have to eat.
Sorry, you're running, say that again?
The lines that will be ran off by the new subdivision, small subdivision, uh, there's water on one side of them, and there's an open on the other, but they'll just run a ten foot car as long as you run.
So you got a new water line parallel to your sewer?
It's, it's.
It's just up there?
Let me read you the, uh, the definition of the R five mixed use residential district. Purpose of the R five urban family residential district is intended to provide medium density residential neighborhoods with single family characteristics followed, allowing considerable latitude in the physical design of the housing. The R five district permits single family residential housing, duplexes and townhouses. It is adaptable to, to both established and developing neighborhoods, as well as to, uh, transition areas between single family and multifamily, uh, developments. The R five district recognizes changes in the form of single family housing and accommodates these changes. As with other residential zones, it requires review and judicial approval of supporting community facilities prepared of traffic, generating characteristics and the base allowed residential use. So, that's what we're considering.
Let me ask you something. How many times, Mario, I don't know how to ask those stuff. But, of Roger's point, I mean, there used to be a day when things like this would come to us, you know, whoever. This was taken to the planning commission, the plan, here's the minutes from, here's the notes from the planning commission. This is what they had to say about it. Ultimately, the planning commission approved it, didn't agree with it, whatever. But the question is, what's the planning commission's role in what we're talking about here? Roads, where roads are, how big roads need to be in relation to a subdivision or a minor subdivision, all those kind of things that we're talking about. What's the input from the planning commission? You know, I mean?
I can get to the minutes of the planning commission, but it was voted on, and asked by the.
But are they thinking about all that? So, I mean, I mean, it would, it would seem to me the planning commission's role is to think about the big picture in all of this, which is what we're talking about, not, you know.
And we do. I mean, the, the, without reading the minutes, you know, you're welcome to attend with me. Uh, we, we discuss this all the time.
But we're not seeing any of that. I mean, I'm.
What would you like to see? Would you like to see the planning division minutes? They're available?
I'd like to see where somebody's updating the master street plan because we're building these areas and this needs to be widened. And, you know, this guy's doing this, and therefore we ought to do that as a city. There's the master plan for the city. Sewer, water, streets, all those things, you know, the.
You know.
It's, if the guy that's on the planning commission's gonna build ten houses because it's a lot.
We brought you the comprehensive plan showing the future development of Greenwood, and y'all looked at it and voted on it and approved it. That included R five areas, R one areas, C two areas, and, and the future growth of, of Greenwood.
So, that discussion motion was made by Mr. McKinney and seconded by Mr. Rogers to approve the preliminary plan. The cottages at Bill addition, but the condition that the city council approved the rezoning to R five. That was the motion.
So we're gonna talk about road widening area?
I guess, and I agree with what we voted on, but I guess, like Daniel's saying, I'd like to see a master street plan that wasn't drawn by Matt Cottner with a crayon, and took this into account, what we approved as the zoning, the high density, high density areas, showing what streets need to be improved, and then when people decide to build over there, that's where we put our money and attack that problem before it becomes a bigger problem. My understanding that the street department has that type of information available to them. I haven't seen that. I said, I, I, I think the mayor and Dennis reviewed that, or maybe it was before Dennis, I'm not sure, but, uh, of the, the streets that needed improving and things like that, uh, so.
Well, John Bailey's sitting there. I mean, the water and sewer permission, they've, they've come back and said, you know, here's these, here's our top five list, and here's our new master plan we've worked on, and these are the things that we're gonna do, you know, there's, we've got this money. These are the things we're planning to do over the next hour, many years, you know, which we can look at, go, okay, that makes a lot of sense, you know, let's funnel the money.
Well, it's not likely, just because they bring it back to you, and not that you're gonna approve it, because that was proven a while ago.
Right.
You rely on these commissions for this information, and I, and I agree with you. You've not seen a master street plan in a long time, and I, and I haven't either.
And that's one of those things, you know, I can't spend water and sewer money, and I can't spend the street department's money. And so, you know, I need their input into future growth and what they, what they can see. I mean, that's their expertise. I'm not, I don't build roads. I can tell you where roads need to be, or where a collector street is, and, and where a local street is.
I'm with you on these streets and stuff, but unfortunately, we're doing a lot of talking about streets without the street director here, without any input.
I think what Daniel's saying is maybe, hey, Tim, we got these ten units going up here on Farnet. Are y'all thinking about doing any widening up here in this area that we can, we can hear?
I can tell you real quickly, look at you, go, no, because nobody said that we ought to.
Well, we probably can't build all these homes originally. We got these streets where they're adequate to hold the extra traffic and where they have leaders eat parties and ten other cars parked out there.
I would ask you that you do the same thing for everything that comes across here.
I agree.
And not, it shouldn't depend on the builder.
I agree.
I'm just gonna say that real quick.
I agree with that.
I don't care if it's Joe Smith or anybody else.
Well, again, the builder can come back as an R one and build ten homes here.
Right.
And they can do it with, with variances that, that's approved, approved by the planning commission. And this is asking for your permission to go to an R five, so the planning commission doesn't have to go through the, the different variances for each individual house and take this and look at it as a minor subdivision and do it in, in, you know, an easier.
We're gonna look at variances.
Or adjustment does that.
You, you put these things in place for them to do that for you. If you don't want them to do it, then you need to not have them.
They would come here for, we're looking at variances every now and then, they make them back to us.
You look at Sonny, you don't look at variances.
Well, there's a guy trying to build a house, build behind his house once out here.
Oh, that's, he appealed to, to the, the council. He was supposed to go to the circuit court, but he appealed to the council.
Well, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus or, or separate Reagan from other builders or any of that. I'm just talking about, you know, the city. I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about the city and the, you know, what's the big picture here? Right started.
And, and we'll get, we'll get with Tim and Greg and Chad, and I'll sit down and, and start talking about, you know, bring, bring everything together and, uh, bring you some information that you're asking for.
He did say, in the minutes, I didn't read it, but it said the department has signed up on it.
So typically, if you don't know, when there's a project that's brought to the city, depending on how big the project is, well, actually not, if there's a project brought to the city by a developer, Sonny then gets with the department heads and brings them all in. Am I right? Department heads, and gets their thoughts on it now. Did Chad or what he's have said, we ought to consider writing this road before we do. He probably did, and I'm not throwing him under the bus, because he's kinda new, getting there. But it hasn't been deemed that that's how he should react to it.
Sewer looked at it and said, I need fire, fire hydrant here.
There's not a project that doesn't happen, that there's, there's these meetings.
Greg looked at it, and there's no problem with the sewer, walk, uh, yeah. Tim with the water, the way everybody looked at it, and, and everybody signed up on it. And when I go up from the planning commission, that's, that's what I tell them. I tell them, you know, of course, any changes on it, like where Stewart wants a fire hydrant, you know, what, what changes are made? And, uh.
That's not a perfect world. That, that's not a perfect scenario, because if Chad's missing one day, or Chad's, I'm using Chad with Stewart, he may, he may look at that and go, I'm gonna go with two fire hydrants, and then a month later go, whoops, I really needed three. Is that that a now?
But, you know, I mean, I'm just, I wanna go forward and, and develop, but we can't, you know, this group can't say, okay, here's X number of dollars that we need to put in the budget for this widening of the street somewhere.
Without some input.
Without somebody giving us some input, saying, we have this plan. We need to, here's where we, this is the, the critical path.
Yeah, I think it's important that we're, the broad, broad of the camp, the idea, if I may, to, from now on, that any, any building added to the city of Greenwood, we all know we have insufficient streets, if that's the right word. We don't have what we ought to have. And we won't have until something, until it's, the idea is planted, that every time somebody comes along with one house, two houses, or ten, for sure, there ought to be thought process going through of what the effect that has on those streets.
Normally, the person that, that'll point out a narrow street will be, will be here.
Yeah, and the new, again, it's, it's very difficult, not difficult, and not, certainly not impossible, with old, because, old neighborhoods, but, I don't know what you're gonna say, but that, that's new, and it's all.
Yeah, that ties to the highway, so when concrete trucks come down through there, they're not tearing anything out of there.
Right.
It's not a big deal. I'm thinking more about, and, and I don't want infill, and like, that's Heritage Edition up behind the post office. And then Bell, we want that infilling, we want them to take advantage of the property that has sewer and water. We've got a big ready to deal with the traffic, especially if they're.
A good example is your neighborhood out there. Whoever built that, I can't remember. Bought that land off Teddy for, built all those houses. Webster Street is terrible. It's too narrow, it's got deep ditches on both sides, that intersection at Denver is awful. And when that neighborhood was built, you know, nobody in the city went, man, that ain't gonna work out very good on this little road out here.
So the roads in the neighborhood are wider than Webster Street feeds the neighborhood? So that street, so that's an example. That street, at the time, the city should've said, all right, we're gonna go ahead and widen this to Collector.
Right.
And, I'm not sure, I mean, that's the conversation I'm trying to have here. Do we need to?
Mechanism in place to see them.
Right. And if this is the only thing that's gonna happen, I think we're okay, but if there's gonna be a series of these happening within this next year, we need to be in front of it, because we're gonna be.
You gotta think about all the land that Son and Greg has over there that's never been touched. That, that, I'll have the acres there, but you just gotta take that into consideration that goes in there behind those parking lots. There's probably fifteen, twenty acres in there. It's a virgin lemon. I mean, if somebody's gonna end up with that, which, you know, they're, they're a part of it.
Especially if you get sewer on it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So if, if the infrastructure's there, then that's gonna start to slow the development out. Where, I mean, I can see like Farnes Street, for example, I mean, it's called Wide Enough from the bar truck.
Lance said the key word right there. That's probably where we failed as a city. So we talked about infrastructure. We're gonna lay the infrastructure and then, and then build it, right? Well, infrastructure is water, sewer, and streets. And we do, we're gonna run sewer, we're gonna run water. And, and I think to, you know, Doug or somebody said earlier, in these older neighborhoods, well, there's already streets, and we're laying sewer, and we don't really think about, but we need to work on that street. And that's just where, over the years, we haven't done a very good job.
So we've, we've put out the invitation, they're accepting it, they're coming. So, you know, we look at Fern Street, that makes my street western look like a, a runway.
Oh, yeah.
Fern, that's a recipe for disaster. And if we allow everybody to come in here, and I'm not saying we're doing this, we just need to get in front of the problem and go ahead and fix the street before we have to go in there messing up all these lives.
But I think you gotta concentrate, you know, on, on the Bell Roads first. Fern is obviously a problem, but you know what I mean? Concentrate on the main arteries around Bell Road, Daisy, Houston, Denver, those kind of things. Get those main arteries.
Denver was considered, you know, we got a grant from R dot to re-surface Denver all the way from the line to seventy-one, and it was done. And there was a little bit of conversation, I was the parks director, I think, when that happened, I don't know if it mattered. But there was some consideration about what to do for the future of that, and we, I think, I think we got a price on getting easements and doing just that. And when I say we, we, we backed off, but we can't afford that.
So that's what happened when Wayne Low brought it up here.
It was a lot. So what we did was.
From Bell Road to Denver, was it?
I think more from South Hall.
I thought so. We, we got a price from Bell Road.
We got one, yeah, we got one going up there too, because that was a consideration when I wanted to go across ninety-six over to ninety-six, and that, that was stages, and it was unbelievable. That was. nine ninety-six over to ninety-six and that, that was stages and it was unbelievable. That was seven years ago.
That was proud.
So, you know, we wanted to do it and it would've made sense, but we stopped because, because we didn't think we could afford it. And someday Denver will be vacated or somebody, somebody's got to stay in. Why didn't they do that back then? Because now it's, I'm gonna speak three hundred million.
The ditches on either side was a big issue.
Yeah, well, you were gonna have to fill them in and that was the cost. It wasn't widening roads, what are you gonna widen on?
Right. So we may or may not have a lot going on over here. So the question is, do we need to concentrate on Bell Road before we have the minutes?
I don't know about that.
Oh, I think you should look at it. I don't, I just don't know where you, what do you.
I would be okay to say that we, we already, we have the right enough, uh, right of way. That when we do get ready to do that.
Sure. Trying to get.
Yeah, I'm saying if we got it down, we can come back later and do it.
That's right.
But not, but not interrupt.
You at least have to wait on plenty of.
Yeah, let's don't go build this mini subdivision, a little sidewalk all the way around it and then, and then we need.
Without having money. So. So the question is to Chad, again, who's not here, to tell us very soon, to tell him very soon, what we own is right away going up Bell Road all the way to.
And, and around this, like on Burn Knoxville, if they had a, a, a right of way.
You'd have thought back when we poured asphalt at Burn, we'd, we'd have done it as wide as we could. I look at Chicago that way because I used to live on it, you know? And people immediately when I moved up there said, well, good, we're gonna get a wide road. Like, no, that's not how that works. Maybe when I moved. So, so what right of way is there to do that? I'm just don't think that.
Get your edges trimmed.
Yeah, or get your edges trimmed. Uh, this is standing, street directors, thank you very much, first day of office. Thanks for bringing that up.
See.
Remember that?
The, the stump block.
Well, because the stump block couldn't get up there because we take that up there often.
Don't get no wide ideas of widening.
See, there, and then you got people that don't want it widened.
They're gonna get expensive.
Right, right. So I, I, I completely agree with, we ought to be planning, we ought to get together and, and maybe get a little more into depth with what's. I, what's good sounding is if we already own the right of way to widen Bell to a collector, then we, we own it and then someday we'll come back and do it. But if we don't own it, then we might ought to think about getting it.
Bell is a temporary entrance to the school.
Yeah.
So we, well, we don't want to end up with Danielle six years from now, one, one property owner to the next.
Yeah, because she loves it a lot.
And then spending years, years trying to get this stupid right of way at the very least.
We did petition the school to fix the intersection over here and, and they.
And they, oh yeah, they could do that.
Wonder how they should come in the first time.
So, any action afterwards? So what do you want to do, gentlemen, on this, uh, request for a rezoning?
Place it on its first reading and hit the answer to all the questions.
Is that a motion?
It's on its first reading by Title One.
Removing the emergency clause?
Removing the emergency clause.
I see.
The motion is taken. Today what it says.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
No.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
It has by majority.
Thank you, gentlemen.
In order to amend the ordinance number eighteen ninety five nine, the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, amending the officials on the city of Greenwood in broken parties.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Sonny. Uh, department reports and questions from council, where they are, the ones that are still waiting.
Chad, what, what right of way do we need, Chad?
Call him up. We will, we will, we will fund all these thoughts and questions to Chad. Anything for anybody else who's about, get your hand up. No? Yes, sir.
Totally off the subject, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You're, and the aldermen know and the councilmen know and they've said in the past, but sometimes things need to be said. And a whole bunch of your staff and a whole bunch of city employees got out Saturday night and worked and made fools of themselves, but had fun. But they did above and beyond on that Pigger Creek Trail. And what they were doing is what makes Greenwood Greenwood. And I think.
Next time you show up as a cowboy with no boots on, we gotta talk.
I tried my boots on, it hurt my penis. I think I walked.
You're talking. That's a good point. I'm glad you said it.
Mr. Mayor, the lights on that trail while we're talking.
Yes, sir.
You have it in your shirt.
Um, that's where I'm looking.
Jeremy Shores, they're, we're waiting, yeah, we're all in the same boat, waiting on engineering.
Jeremy Shores.
Engineer Hopkins, okay.
He's, we're almost there.
So close.
So close.
Bell Park, City.
And, and he wants, he wants to present them all at once, all the different projects that I have because he wants, he thinks it would be easier for one contractor or a contractor, however many bid on it, to do all.
There'll be decorative lines.
Don't you dare. There have, there's, there's two different, there's two different things. There'll be decorative, then he's got a price for decorative lighting and a price for just regular lights like are in our parking lot. They're, they're decorative, but not like.
Right. Mayor, I'm, I'm sure we've had this discussion before, but at some point I'd like to discuss, uh, or re-discuss having anyone here. Phone staff, phone staff. You'd like a train, uh, conductor, train, we asked for six tracks. Oh, you mean so? Yeah. I love to discuss it. We, we, I, I unrealistically offered that position to Jeremy. You just let him, you can't afford it.
Yeah, that's right.
That's Jeremy Shores.
Based on where she's been on, uh, projects, I mean, based on where she's been on engineering, could have had, I'd love to have that conversation.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
You don't see with Jeremy, there's twenty engineers behind.
Yeah, he's.
That's true.
He's tired of waiting.
He can do one thing maybe or two. He's just feeling for twenty to thirty people. I have nine projects, she has, I don't know how many. He's had other engineers doing this, so.
And we're not the only people he works.
Yeah, there's like six or seven communities, so it's a, it's a bunch of people doing it.
I was approached by another company the other day. They wanted back then. I won't mention who they are.
Oh, my.
No. What is it going on? Anybody else got anything?
Where you hands them for?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, you know what I'm gonna ask about?
What is it?
It's subtle.
Okay, well, there's not a lot of change.
I can, Rod, help.
Yeah. We have, we have two that are not in our hand that we are, that we are told are coming and that's LDS Church and Baptist Health. They give the same answers they had for a while about, we're good, we're signing it, we just gotta find it. No, that's not true. It's on somebody's desk. The one that is a complete holdout is the, uh, Morlock property and you gave, you gave permission to pursue that. We have ordered a, Mr. Hammy advised me in order for him to get prepared to do this, stop me anytime, is to have a, uh, appraisal on said property and we have ordered that. It will not be, uh, they will not get it. It's, they're kind of like, they.
They're saying the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, they're gonna get done when we're, the appraisal and then we'll get that to Mike, into Mike, do whatever he does.
By all your permission, you can see, by all means, I'm gonna get what they're giving, what they're giving. Could you send a dear God letter to Baptist and LDS?
Um, LDS, I think that Alex out here, the, the, the leading.
By the way, I see you've lost your caller.
Has that a contact, have you talked to them?
Yeah, it's the, the head of the LDS Church is the dentist, Dr. Loftus over in Beaumont. He's on board. You guys want a cell phone number? I'll give it to you.
Everybody said, we met, Sonny and I met with someone, very nice gentleman from LDS Church. He said, no problems, we'll get it to you. That's been.
That's what we keep hearing, but they are not, that these local people are not the ones that make the decision.
He said, he's, he's the one, give him a call, everybody's there.
Wrong. We are, right now we're in legal, well, the legal review is a whole different department.
Yeah, the U.S. in Utah.
Well, he's got a cell number.
We'll take his cell.
I even said, is it a Utah thing? No, no, they're up in Dittingville. What about?
We'll take whatever you got. Give us the number.
I've talked to multiple people.
But the, so the.
So they've signed.
Absolute holdout. These other ones we think just matter, didn't drive person and, uh, Morlock will not, will not pick up, sorry. We, we, the city or Danielle had sent certified letter, but they're not picking them up.
We should do a case of green.
Yes. Now, I will tell you, we had, we had a recent scare and I'll share this recent scare. R dot has put in place a mechanism to keep up with these things and they kind of did it probably because of our situation. They, they as much as told us that. So I got chilled right then because I, I panicked, uh, because I thought I'm gonna have to look right down and say, we messed up. Uh, Jeremy Shores has been in charge of staying in touch with R dot on these, there is a quarterly report, isn't it?
Quarterly.
That R dot is now requiring. So we got a letter, I mean, I got an email and she got an email and everybody that gets emails here got an email from R dot saying, you have missed your last report on such and such project, which is that sidewalk. We promptly, I mean promptly, called Jeremy Shores and we get the same answer as everybody does. He's not here. Who's calling? Mayor Greenwood. Well, let me see if he's there. And he's there. But, so he gets on the phone, he says, what's up? And I said, Jeremy, we just forwarded you this email saying that R dot has not received our, our latest, uh, report. And he put the wrong job number on the report. It was not Greenwood, it was Calum the Zoo. I don't know what it was. And he promptly recognized that, called R dot, got it straightened out, we're good to go. But that was pretty scary because he literally put down the wrong job. Sixty-four oh nine, I think, is our job number that I've been staring at for two years or whatever, and whatever it is, I don't know, a long time. And so it was, it was probably not as close to being messed up as I think, but it sure sounded like it. They are, R dot is quick to give us an email to say, this report's done. We immediately forward. Jeremy gets the same. We just forwarded to Jeremy and then he takes care of it. This time he just put the wrong number down.
He, he's got one of mine too, the, the extension of the sidewalk in Bell Park.
Yeah.
He's, he's in connection, he's talking to R dot.
But it was the wrong government. So they, so they were looking at it going, whoop, Greenwood hadn't turned it in, or, or Perry hadn't turned it in. So yes, we're still good.
Still good, same three people.
Yep. I told Bradley Oliver the other day, when his wife came down here to get a proclamation for a nurse practitioner, they do, she does it every year. Bradley was with him and I, and I said, by the way, I was kind of just kind of, maybe a little mischievous and I said, by the way, we're still lacking three, two tonight in our hand. They think they're okay. We're, we gotta hold that. And his wife looked at me, she said, it better not be him. I said, no, women is not, that's taking care of. But she brought him down here to sign it. But she was really quick to go, oh. And I forgot to tell you, glad I said this, uh, she works for Baptist Health and she said, and I'm gonna bank on it, but she said, let me know who you're talking to and I'll get her done because she did. Of course, that's her husband. So we need to let Bradley's wife know who you've been talking to.
It's like, I'm Vince Willbey.
I know, but may, maybe you'll let me along.
You gotta call Evelyn.
Or call Evelyn. No, it was Bradley's wife that got him down here. I mean, she, so that's where we are.
Did I hire a race to beat you up?
Yeah.
We took the hits and the solar radio was going to water commission.
Okay, I'm not following you. We did that because, I'm sorry, they bring it back here. We did it with them because we got to have to get their permission to put it down there. Sorry.
This, this has got a gene about that. I bought it us in the long.
That street?
No. The cash down in basketball goes in the streets.
Their streets?
I mean, you go out King Mountain. You can't even get down, you can't even get down the streets. They're everywhere.
Do we have, do we have an ordinance, gentlemen?
It's not just there, but you go out to East Gate, then. They're everywhere.
So beating the traffic, we can bump them up on the curb.
I just.
And they just need to lower it down by twelve inches because that's, because it'll be, it'll be a ten foot shot.
Right.
Between the parked cars and the basketball goes, you can't get the emergency vehicles down the street. They can really experience.
We can, now, now here's the deal with that. Where does that go? I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic here. I agree with you. I've had dodging myself. In fact, I've had elderly ladies call about the same situation. Is that, once we, in, in PD, uh, did I call, I guess I'm asking, did I call PD and have them address it or code?
I was at PD.
They're gonna love it, I'll do it.
We looked at ordinance up here not long ago about.
Put that.
It's pretty standard. It's.
I always thought that if it was in the street, it was a PD problem.
Yeah, and it should be, so we'll address it.
I don't know. I mean, they won't move out there and play basketball, but they move back, but they're legal. There's one up there right now on, on King Mountain. It's just set right in the middle of the road. I mean, it's just.
Well, it was, it was, uh, the lady that called once upon a time and I went out there and looked and sure enough, she got it. It was, uh, Jim Nichols' mother on Bridge Crest.
I think I counted East Gate, I think I counted by twelve of them.
You think they get together and just have?
Yeah. Anyway, it's, it's about the end of the world, but I just think.
Make a note, Daniel.
You know, the basketball move real.
So. Yeah, no joke. These kids are trying to get better. Now we're moving their goals. They're making shooting eleven foot goals to the ten. All right. Anything else for these folks? If not, we would entertain it is. Thank you.